Good evening. The Charter Township of Plymouth Board of Trustees meeting for Tuesday, June 26, 2018, will come to order. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Dempsey.
Present.
Trustee Heitman.
Here.
Clerk Borba here. Trustee Dorsevitz.
Here.
Trustee Kermy.
Here.
Treasurer Clinton.
Here.
Supervisor Heisey.
Here.
All present, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Next is the pledge of allegiance. Tonight, let's have Representative Noble lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Item C is approval of the agenda. We have item 10, which is the settlement agreement with the City of Plymouth. You all have a copy of the backup. What I'd like to do at this point, even though the settlement agreement is on the agenda, I would like to, I'd like to have a motion to add the backup to item 10 at this time. So I just need a motion to add the backup to item 10.
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Heitman.
I move to add the backup to number 10, agenda item.
Alrighty. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no objections, the item is added to item 10. Then I need a motion to approve the entire agenda.
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Clerk.
I move to approve the agenda for Tuesday, June 26, 2018.
Thank you. Is motion made by Clerk Borba? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Heitman. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next up is item D, approval of the consent agenda. Any comments or questions from the board?
This pertains to the police, a fire chief, the write-off amount for, why are we still writing off? And we're a year and a half past when we had that resolution to change our policy on write-offs. And if you can't answer it now, I really think the Director of Finance, probably who's got good analytical skills on receivables, we need to send us some detailed dot points to the board of why we're still writing off, if you can't answer it.
So Cindy will look into that? Okay.
Question I have, let's keep going on the same piece of paper, the fire report. Mutual aid, 17 times this month, 10 went to Canton. Was there something going on in Canton that was a very unusually large number for the month?
Yes, Canton did have a couple of large events this month that they needed us for. We have seen a consistent increase in the amount of mutual aids to Canton, this month being the largest so far. But we've had quite a few to Canton. Canton's been calling us a lot.
And equal question over to the police. Number of larcenies in May is equal to the entire year so far? Is there something, is there something happening in May, full moon every night?
It's the weather. We put a thing out in the newspaper, we posted it on Facebook. It's car hopping kids. We're trying to tell everybody to keep their car locked, or possibly even park it in their garage if they can. It's just pulling on door handles and taking items.
Good. Thank you.
Let's go back to the Canton thing. Was the Canton spree on this month, or whatever it's called? That?
Liberty Fest.
Liberty Fest? Sometimes that ties up a lot of police and firemen.
That is in June. That's this month. So we will see that in the June report, not the May report. The 10 calls were for the May report, which was not for Liberty Fest.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions or comments on item D? Looking for a motion.
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Clerk.
I move for the approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is motion made by Clerk Borba? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Heitman. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next up is item E, public comments and questions. Before we get into that, though, I do want to welcome Boy Scout Troop 1537, who is here tonight. You've picked a good meeting to be at, so congratulations. Public comments and questions. This is not, this will not be our only opportunity for public comments and questions during the evening. We will have another opportunity at the end of the meeting. Plus, we also encourage comments and questions on individual agenda items, as long as they pertain to that particular agenda item. And we are reminding folks that we are going to enforce the three-minute rule, which is allowed for under the Open Meetings Act. Before that, though, we have a presentation by 20th District State Representative Jeff Noble. Good evening, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and board members.
Get right into that microphone. You probably don't need it, but we need it for recording purposes.
All right. If I get too loud, I apologize in advance. Yes, thank you, Mr. Supervisor and committee members. Thank you very much. Also, law enforcement and Fire Department, we thank you so much for the opportunity. It's always nice to come and give some good news. I would like to make you aware of a legislative idea that we have. We submitted a bill, a three-part bill. Representative Shepherd, Representative Hernandez, and I have put together a three-part bill that basically will help you in the township to be able to do some innovative use of products that are currently on the market for road repair and construction. It's a grant program that will be matching funds, and I'm really excited about that coming to fruition. I think it's going to help our township out a great deal. So be looking for that, but it'll be a great opportunity for us to try some of the new things, since our friends at MDOT have a tendency to use the old things. We're going to try to do the new things. And so we're hoping our townships will take advantage of that opportunity of a matching program from the state of Michigan. In addition to that, I just have got some announcements I'd like to make. I was very excited to be able to be a part of the budget process that happened coming out of Lansing. We were glad that we did not have to raise any taxes. We were able to move money around and actually found some resources that we could use. And one of those things was shortly after we came into this office, I was meeting with some of the firemen over there, firefighters at the firehouse, and I asked them, I said, "How are things going?" And they said they had just filled out a grant for a new fire engine, and they got turned down. And I said, "Well, that's too bad." And they said, "Oh, our newest fire engine is 15 years old." Now it's probably 16 years old, since we talked last time. But...
Eighteen?
Eighteen? Wow, okay. Well, I was talking to firefighters over there, so they were giving it the benefit of doubt. But nonetheless, very excited to be able to announce that we were able to get $400,000 for the Township of Plymouth, Plymouth Township, to be able to purchase a new fire engine. And so I think it's very exciting for you guys. And as I told you earlier, the only thing I ask is when you get it, that I get a ride, okay? That's all I'm asking. The second thing that we were able to do was to be able to get $200,000 for a new 911 emergency dispatch system for both the City of Plymouth and Plymouth Township. I think that'll make things more safe here in our community, and I'm very excited about that. One more thing, well, actually two more things. One is, is a $500,000 budget allotment for the rebuilding of General Drive, which gives access to the Absapure Water Company. And so we're really excited to be able to provide funding for that, and I think it'll really benefit those of the folks that travel that back and forth to Absapure. Two other, one other thing I just want to share with you is that we're able to get for the City of Plymouth, $96,000 for a library project they've got going on. I know we're in the township, but we all benefit from the library there in the City of Plymouth. So I thought you would want to know about that. And that's my report. If you've got any questions, I'd be honored to answer any of those things you may have.
Well, Rep. Noble, I really, we really appreciate the assistance that you've provided to us this year through the state budget. It really is critical. We do not have the necessary funds to improve the equipment in our Fire Department and to upgrade our 911 system. It's a great blessing to, for us, to not have to worry about those. And now we can be more creative in some of the other funding opportunities, and some of those you will see tonight in our agenda, where we can supplement the money that you're providing, so that we can get on it and get these, get this equipment on the streets as soon as possible.
Excellent. It's your money. We just need to get it back to the, to you guys, so...
Yeah, we absolutely appreciate you've done, you're doing a much better job of bringing home the bacon than that former state rep.
Oh, no. He did a good job, too.
That guy, I tell you.
We were all saying...
Yeah, I know you were thinking it. I knew you were thinking it. So, well, anyway, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And other board members, if you have any comments or questions, feel free.
Thank you, Jeff.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thanks for the gifts. I'm going to send you back with an assignment. You know me.
I do.
There's two companies, DTE and Consumers Energy.
I've heard of them.
That are providing poor service and providing extremely high costs.
Right.
Plus, they're mounting a huge lobbying effort, targeting certain representatives who oppose them.
Right.
And now they've hooked up with a company from California to somehow dupe us into becoming the renewable king of the Midwest, the next era, or next energy, or whatever, to increase our renewables substantially. These people are driving up our costs, so if we really want jobs in Michigan, you need to get to the Public Service Commission and to your colleagues, we need to put a throttle on these two companies.
Yeah, we've been getting that information, obviously Gary Glenn leading the charge there for the Energy Policy Committee, and taking a huge hit from DTE and Consumers. I will tell you this, I did go over to the open house. I'd actually invited Trustee Dempsey to be able to go, but he had another event that night. Oh, okay. But anyway, we had, DTE was actually in and kind of explained to us about the things that were going on in the City of Plymouth, and I was asking them some questions, just kind of statewide. So, but you're right, we are paying way too much, and we need to have more energy choice. And so we're going to be working on that. But thank you for the insight. Anyone else?
I did have a question, but I'm trying to figure out, it's kind of a done, the $10 million that went to Salem Township, can you maybe comment on that?
I don't know anything about $10 million that went to Salem. And again, you may know, you may know more than I did. What we were made aware of is that there was $10 million that was available, and we were able to secure $2 million for the district here in Northville, Plymouth, and part of Canton.
This was last month?
Yeah. Yeah. So as far as $10 million for Salem, I'm not on appropriations, so I really can't tell you, but if you'd like me to find out, I can. But I don't know anything about Salem getting $10 million.
Yeah, that was not in this year's budget. And that was not your, you had no hand in that.
Okay. I'm glad to know that.
It was MEDC, so maybe they don't have line item budget at the legislative level.
So anyway, but thank you very much for the opportunity to share with you. If you've got any questions, I'll be hanging around for a while.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Rep.
All right. Anyone else? Lena?
My name is Lena Epstein. I appreciate the opportunity to speak in front of you tonight. Plymouth Township is near and dear to my heart. As a business owner, I own and operate a business called Vescal Oil Corporation that has done business in Plymouth for over 50 years, and I was born in 1981. I'm running to be your next Congresswoman, and I truly come from the world outside of politics. The business called Vescal Oil stands for Victor Epstein Silverman and Company, and it was started by my dad's dad 71 years ago. Because my father is in poor health after graduating from college, I was asked to take over the business. And it was 2008, and the recession took a third of our customers. And it was at that time that I decided to look under the hood of Washington, DC, and I learned that 95, and I say this respectfully, 95% of all federal legislators had never created a job. And that's what brought me to the party. I am a Republican. I have a wife. I'm a mother. And I'm a business owner who understands how government overreach directly cripples the businesses and the families that they employ. Plymouth Township is near and dear to my heart. I have walked in the garages, the manufacturing facilities, the stamping presses that exist right in this township. I have seen the heart, the love, the grit, and the tenacity that is this township. It will be a great, great honor to fight for this community in Washington, DC. My name is Lena Epstein, and I'm humbled to be here before you tonight. I come with great respect for the leadership in this community. I come with great respect for the grassroots and the residents. I'm a woman of deep faith, and I assure you that while I will make mistakes in Washington, it is my deep belief that we will prevail, and that it will be my goal to serve this community with love, and with grace, and with dignity. Thank you very much. Lena Epstein, running to be your next Congresswoman. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else at this time?
I want to voice again my concerns about the PRC estimates for their project of building new theater and renovating the school for businesses. In doing some research online for recent structures similar to a performing arts center, orchestra hall-type building, our estimate that we've been provided from Don Sonnen seems to be quite low, especially since the Canton Township Theater cost over $11 million to build in 2003, and it seats half the number that the proposed one in the PRC complex is going to seat, at 800 seats. 11 million to 14 million. That leaves $3 million to put 400 more seats in a building, and also a balcony, which the Canton Theater does not have. In Auburn, Alabama, a construction of a new performing arts center started last year. 1,200 seats. $50 million. Just astonishing that we could build an 800-seat theater for 14 million. This really needs some examination before it is put for a vote before the people, because we're going to get hit again for this when the real cost comes in. The real cost of building an 800-seat theater is not 14 million. Plus, there are $6 million in pledges that are supposed to go towards this project, and there's been no talk of how we're going to guarantee those come in, or are we going to go back to the taxpayers and ask for more money? When we get a shovel in the ground on this project, it's too late. The township residents will pay again to make up the difference of this. It's not a $30 million project. It's going to be a $50 million project. One question I have is, when reviewing everything that has been developed, what engineering firm, what architectural firm is the one that supplied the cost for the renovations to this middle school, and also the new construction of the theater and all the other facilities, the parking lots and everything?
Your time is up. Thank you.
That was a question.
You'll have to ask Mr. Sonnen.
But you guys all reviewed the reports from him, right?
Your time is up.
But that was a question.
You'll have to ask Mr. Sonnen. We've been having this debate for six months.
I never have asked that question before.
I've never answered it before, so your time is up.
So if you've read the reports from the PRC development, who is the architectural or engineering firm that supplied the cost?
You'll have to ask Mr. Sonnen, and your time is up. Thank you. You will have an opportunity to speak again at the end of the meeting.
No, this was the question and answer period, and I asked a question and deserve an answer.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you. Next up is new business, item F1, reappointment of Dennis Sabolski to the Planning Commission for a three-year term. Any comments or questions? I don't think he's here, so... Anybody else have comments or questions on F1?
I have a motion. You ready?
I was just going to make a comment on both of these gentlemen, Dennis and Bill. So it's a really good planning commission, and, you know, kind of my standard is that I don't necessarily need to agree with everybody, but if they, you know, they do their homework, they engage in the process, and they, you know, they make reasoned decisions, I strongly recommend we reappoint both of these gentlemen.
All right. I move to approve Resolution 2018-06-26-37, authorizing the reappointment of Mr. Dennis Sabolski to the Planning Commission for a three-year term expiring on June 30, 2021.
Motion's been made by Trustee Kermy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Clerk Borba. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Kermy.
Yes.
Trustee Dorsevitz.
Yes.
Trustee Heitman.
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey.
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey.
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton.
Yes.
Clerk Borba, yes. Motion passed.
All right. Item 2 is the reappointment of William Pratt to the Planning Commission. Comments, questions? If not, I need a motion.
Okay. Ready?
Yep.
I move to approve Resolution 2018-06-26-38, authorizing the reappointment of Mr. William Pratt to the Planning Commission for a three-year term expiring on June 30, 2021.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Trustee Kermy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Heitman. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Kermy.
Yes.
Trustee Heitman.
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey.
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton.
Yes.
Clerk Borba, yes.
Trustee Dempsey.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Did he call Dorsevitz?
Sorry, Dorsevitz.
I'm going to have to think about it.
Okay. My apologies. Motion passed.
Thank you. Next up is item F3, approval of a storm drain agreement. Mr. Richmond.
Thank you, Supervisor. This storm drain agreement is for the newly constructed Autozone on Ann Arbor Road. As a reminder, as part of the permitting process, Wayne County, going through Wayne County for storm sewer, they require the township to accept jurisdiction of the stormwater management. This storm drain agreement passes that responsibility on to the developer. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions or comments for this item?
Yes. This probably is for the attorney. I don't understand the business structure. It's a California company that owns the business. Is it a franchise? It's notarized in the state of California.
Michigan law requires that if an out-of-state formed corporation or LLC wants to do business in the state of Michigan, they've got to receive, they've got to appoint a resident agent and receive a certificate of good standing in order to conduct business in Michigan. The mere fact that it's an out-of-state LLC does not preclude them from doing business in Michigan. As to the nature of FRC, of the one that's listed in the agreement, I don't know the exact nature of that one.
Any other questions or comments? Anything from the public on this one? Okay, I need a motion.
But before we go, we know who to talk to if there's cleaning that's required at their expense. We know how to contact them?
Yes. Yeah.
All right.
Okay, looking for a motion.
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Heitman.
I move to adopt Resolution 2018-06-26-39, authorizing the township supervisor to sign the Wayne County Permit M49513 and approve the storm drain agreement with FRC Plymouth Magic LLC, and authorize the township supervisor and clerk to execute same.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Trustee Heitman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Clerk Borba. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Heitman.
Yes.
Trustee Dorsevitz.
Yes.
Clerk Borba, yes. Trustee Dempsey.
Yes.
Trustee Kermy.
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey.
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Next up is item 4. This is the 2017 Audit Presentation and Approval. And tonight, we have Martin and Carrie from Plant Moran.
Good evening. Thank you for letting us present the 2017 audit. As Supervisor mentioned, Carrie Shays with me. She's the audit manager that was responsible for the fieldwork. I'm the engagement partner for the township's audit. With us, we do have a few documents that you'll have in front of you. We're not going to go page by page on all the documents. The main document is the thickest of the items, is the financial statement itself. Couple pages in, on page 1 is the opinion letter that I wanted to point everybody to. In that opinion letter, you'll notice that it is an unmodified opinion, which means that you can rely on the financial statement amounts that are reported, and for budgeting purposes, et cetera, et cetera. So based on our audit procedures, again, you receive what I call a letter, or grade A, on the information that's contained in here. For the numbers themselves, we're going to go through the graph presentation, so that way we don't have to go page by page in the financial statements. If you do have any questions or anything pertaining to the financial statements or the graphs, feel free to either stop us, or we can discuss right after Carrie goes over the graphs. And then following the graph presentation, we're going to go through the management letter, which I'll cover any findings or any recommendations we will have for the township as a result of the audit. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Carrie. And I do want to point out that we do have Erin O'Connor on here as well. She did a lot of the fieldwork. She was the in-charge. She is getting married this weekend, so therefore she's tied up with a lot of less detailed, so that's why she's not here.
What a lame excuse.
All right. So we're going to begin by looking at the Township's General Fund. The first graph we're going to look at breaks down some key components of your general fund revenue. So if you look at this, you'll see, if you totaled it up, that there's an increase of $575,000 or 4% from 2016's revenue of $14.2 million to $14.7 million in 2017. So we'll talk about property taxes on the next slide, but your other large component of revenue is your state shared revenue. That increased about $621 million, and that's twofold. So about $430,000 was an increase in your LCFA payment this year over last year, and the other increase...
Let's slow the pace, please. And plus, it's not up on the board. Right?
It is. It's the state shared revenue.
All right. So let's point to it, or whatever.
Okay. So the state shared revenue this year of the $2,837,000 is an increase over the $2,216,000 in state shared revenue from last year. This is a $600,000, million dollar, or $600,000 increase, and that's twofold. It's $430,000. Your LCFA payment was larger than last year, and your state shared revenue increased about $165,000 over prior year. The other category I wanted to point out is, I think, the sixth one over, which is the city fire contribution. This is down from 2016, and that's because there's no separation revenue that occurred in 2017.
Hold on. That's pension only, or we are getting money for health benefits?
Yeah.
Health insurance? That is not in here? Or it is in here?
It is in here. There's $126,000, I believe, received in fiscal year 17 for that. We turn to the next slide.
Hang on. So property taxes went down slightly.
Yeah.
State shared revenue went up by almost, almost 20%.
Mm-hmm.
No, more than that. Almost, almost 60, yeah, 620 seconds. Other revenue went up. Interest income went up significantly.
Yeah.
Suggestion for when you do this next time for us, or maybe another client, is label the histograms by year, so my eyes don't have to go back to the color.
Okay.
Would be more efficient.
Sure.
Kinda like that, but.
Okay. Okay. So you're gonna drill down now on this?
I was gonna look at property tax on the next slide. So this gives you a history over the last seven years, and you can see it's ping-ponging right around that $7 million number. It is down slightly from last year, and that decrease is really due to a decline in taxable value from 2016 to 17. It went down a little bit. You're okay to move to the next slide. We can take a look at the trend for expenditures over the past five years. So in total, the expenditures increased $250,000 or 1.7% from 14.4 million to approximately 14.6 million. The main changes I'm gonna focus on, the first is the general government in the first column, so you can see that increased about $200,000. It's mainly twofold. This captures the expense for the Wayne County road projects, for the crack and sealing that was done. A large portion of that, 500 of the 700,000, was reimbursed. The 200,000 of expense falls in here. And then the fire-
Let's stop right there with that one. We had 750,000, so you're saying that we did not achieve 100% reimbursement because with, did we forget to file, or what happened?
I'm not sure on the logistics of it, and I know that there's 750,000 that was an expense, and I believe-
Okay, we have our staff in here. Let's ask, let's find out what happened.
We ran out of time. The project wasn't completed, and we had to have all the extra reimbursements in.
You need to get close so we can hear.
The project ran out, we ran out of time with the project and the timing of the funding, basically. So we had 700, the ultimate grant was for $750,000, and I believe we spent 506, or 5, okay, 506,000. So we got reimbursed for that, but then our match was 20%. So.
So we filed late, or we, or that is the match? I'm confused, based on what you said previously.
Wasn't the match 20%, Patrick?
Yes, the match is 20%. I don't recall the exact reason. I seem to recall that the crack sealing program came under budget.
No.
No? Okay.
Well, it didn't add up to the 750,000, but we only got reimbursed for what we incurred, which was 509.
Okay. I'm sorry. I don't know the reason offhand.
So we had a certain out-of-pocket. But I'm trying to determine whether that out-of-pocket was because we filed reimbursement late, or was that the match? I've heard two different answers.
No, that, that, those two coincided. Every time we asked for reimbursement, we also had to show our match. So we didn't have to match the 20% just because we ran out of time. It was, as we were doing the billing, we had to take expense 20% of our own, and then we could ask for reimbursement of the 80%.
So this is for Plant Moran. Did that wash out, then? In other words, it's just a time lag that we had this change because we got reimbursed in one year and spent the money in a previous year, or?
No, we got it all in the same year.
All in the same year. All right. Yes.
I'm having a hard time reconciling these charts against, you know, page five, when it goes into the detail, so.
Page five, I believe, is the table that's in the MDNA, and that is a full accrual-based table, so it includes all governmental funds, not just the general fund. If you wanted to cross it to a financial statement page, you would turn to, I believe, page 13.
Okay.
And the first column is the general fund alone.
Okay. Well, I'm trying to compare it to previous years. I'm just, I'm having a hard time following it. I'm not sure why. 3.7, okay.
Yeah, so for example, halfway down under expenditures, the first line's general government. The 3.765 aligns with the general government on the chart.
You mean page 13 and the bound?
Correct. Yep.
The very first column for the general fund aligns with the graphs that were just presented.
So year over year, the expenditures went up in 17.
Correct. By about $250,000.
250?
Mm-hmm.
And that's the match for the money for the crack sealing.
Ah, okay. Now I'm following.
The other increase I was gonna point out on here was there was some increase in fire costs. A large portion of that was for the equipment, the breathing apparatuses that were purchased during 2017, or in that expenditure line item. So if we turn to slide four, we're gonna look at what happened to the end fund balance number during the year for general fund. So to break this chart apart a little bit, and if you look in the far-right column, the bars, the teal bars are your annual revenue, the purple bars are your annual expenditures. So you can see every year, they're both going up, and they're very close to each other. You can see that, I think with the exception of 2016, your revenues are always exceeding your expenditures, which is what you want. If you look at the line chart, the almost completely straight line, that's your total fund balance. So this year, you had an increase to your fund balance of about $144,000 in the general fund, bringing it to a total of approximately $4 million. The zigzag line below it is showing you what portion of that total fund balance is called unassigned, or the fund balance that's available for your use. So this year, that totaled $2.7 million roughly. The percent that's hanging out there is a percent that we find is pretty helpful to most of our clients, in that that is taking your unassigned fund balance, that 2.7 million, as a percent of your expenditures, the 14.6 million, and saying that's about 18%. So about, you could kind of, you close your doors, if you will, and stop the revenue coming in. You'd have enough in your unassigned fund balance to cover about 1/5 of your expenses a year.
I have a question that I lost it.
If we turn to the next slide on page five, we'll take a look at the unfunded legacy costs for the township.
If I could ask a question, I don't remember now what I was gonna ask. So a fund balance is calculated, is it the last day of the year, and, okay, the last day of the year, whatever cash minus whatever's in cupboard is what the fund balance basically is?
Yes. It, it's a set of, a little more rounded, so your total assets, cash is part of that, minus your total liability is what's left over.
So, so you may have $10 million in the bank because you just collected taxes, but, but you don't really, that cash isn't ours because there's a liability. We have to pay out the other taxing authorities and things like that.
What happens in that case? You'll have a deferred revenue item, so that way you're not recognizing that revenue until next year.
Right.
So the net is what's truly available at December 31st. Now, one item I do wanna point out in the unassigned fund balance, so 18% to 2.6 million dollars might sound like a lot, until you get to this slide that Carrie's covering, talking about the unfunded liabilities. And that's where it's really important to talk about those liabilities, because they are ultimately gonna be payable by the township. They might change a little bit, because it is an estimate, it's an extraryal analysis that's done for those. But ultimately, those do come due, and that's where the money needs to be set aside.
So looking at the unfunded legacy costs, the two bars, the green bars are your pension liability that's not funded to date. Noted that there are pension assets that do exist. This is just representing the part that's not funded. And then the orange bars are your OPEB or your retiree healthcare costs. So in total, these legacy costs combined are about $25.9 million, 16.4 of that being healthcare-related, and about 9.5 million pension-related. You'll notice, I just wanted to point out, your, your OPEB creeped up just a little bit this year. It's a common trend we're seeing, just as costs go up and things like that, they get accounted for. The pension went down slightly. That was really due to positive investment earnings that happened this year. Those will, will get smoothed over time, but that was a portion of why your, you had a favorable, I guess, decline in your NPL.
Does the City of Plymouth calculation play into this graph? Not calculation, contribution?
It doesn't.
No.
So, so the OPEB money we're getting, receiving from the City of Plymouth is not in this graph?
That's correct. It's not included. When you, if you set the money aside from the City of Plymouth, when you do receive it, if you put it in a trust fund, it will be reflected, it'll reduce your liability. If the money comes into the township and stays in your general cash account, it will still show the liability, because technically the township's still liable for the full amount ultimately. Now, you'll have those extra resources, you choose to segregate those for the liability, but the liability still needs to be shown in full amount.
So now, when you go to the bound version, there is no reference in there to the City of Plymouth. There's a narrative farther back. So let's find the, how come it's, there's no, in the note on OPEB? What page would it be on?
So it's commented on that the revenue came in in the management discussion analysis in the front. In the actual footnote, I don't believe there's any acknowledgement of that, because under GAZBIE, to Martin's point, they don't acknowledge those as assets or benefits to your OPEB until they're designated in a set aside trust.
But what's keeping you from noting it on page, for example, 42?
42.
Like I, I talked with Martin about this.
That agreement was not finalized as of 12/31/17, so we can't put that in the footnotes themselves. That's why it's included.
Oh, yes, it was. Healthcare.
You're talking about healthcare, or?
Healthcare. That's what we're talking about, healthcare.
The healthcare-
That was finalized in 2017, long before December 31.
The healthcare agreement-
And we received the payments.
The healthcare agreement that we reached with the City of Plymouth does nothing to the unfunded liability. They're just paying as you go their share.
I, I know that, completely.
Okay.
But I wanted a footnote in here saying, by the way, they are receiving $78,000 a year from the City of Plymouth that goes towards this, but.
The township included that in the management discussion analysis.
Right, I saw that. But typically, if a bond, somebody would look at this page, and you would not know it unless you further got into the narrative. It's in here. I, there's some mention. Where would it, I forgot where it would be, where it said, what page is it on?
Page six.
Page six, that's right, okay.
At the top paragraph.
Yeah, first paragraph, right?
Correct.
If that money was segregated in a trust, that would definitely be reflected in the footnote.
So it's only, the 126,000 is reflected in our revenue, general fund revenue?
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
I still think that we should, in the future, put in something on the page, or do some note that we're, we're not totally going it alone here. All right.
All right. We can move to the next slide, slide six. Thank you. So this is a snapshot of some of the activity for the Water and Sewer Fund, mainly looking at your operating revenues and your operating expenditures over the past four years. The bright orange or taller bars are your operating revenue. You want those to be taller than your expenses. The line is showing your unrestricted net position. Note, the WATUAA investment that you have is pulled out of there, so if you were to tie this into your statements, it's lower for that purpose, to really show you what your unrestricted net position is. So at the end of 2017, that number was $8,496,000, and your operating revenue exceeded expenditures by approximately $2 million.
So please define unrestricted.
There's no external restrictions on those funds outside of the fact that they're driven by rates, so you would need to use them most likely for water sewer purposes, that they're in that fund, but there's not a restriction on them to be used for debt payments or anything else.
Is it cash?
It doesn't directly necessarily translate to cash, but I can tell you how much cash is in the fund.
Yes.
Seven million dollars.
Pardon? Seven million is, is cash?
Correct. The reason we back out WATUAA investment, because you can't, technically, you're not gonna just sell it.
Right.
That's why we backed it out, so that we can truly see how much cash or how much unrestricted amount you have.
So there was approximately a $500,000 increase in your operating revenue this year, which was a reflection of the rate increases that were in.
It's a good thing we did that.
So why did expenses drop again? I know you just.
There was a decline in the cost of sewage treatment this year.
Yeah, right.
It's another good thing we did.
Backed it on both sides, revenue and cost of expenses.
Yeah.
And you know, the fund balance, if you recall, over the years has been dwindling down overall. So if you have repairs, you have certain expenses you have to incur in water sewer, it was getting a little close, so building that back up is definitely important. And Bob, we are, we will be taking up the water rates at our July 10th meeting, so I think you will see, at least for this upcoming year, that things will stabilize much more because of the, you know, the tough decisions we had to make last year and the savings that we are now seeing by full, fully separating from Wayne County.
All right. The last chart. Thank you. This is the solid waste disposal activity, same color as the previous slide, so the bright orange is your operating revenue. You'll notice that it did increase from 2016 to 2017, approximately $300,000. It had declined in 2014 to 2016, but you'll also notice that your operating expenses continue to creep up. So your unrestricted net position declined from 2016 at $190,000 to $100,000 in 2017.
And to follow up on that, we will also be taking up that issue at our July 10th meeting, and that will probably not be as stable as it has been in the past.
With that, I did wanna talk about the post-audit letter briefly. There are four different sections, and it's probably about a 10-page document that you have in front of you. Section one talks about any significant items that we would have noted during the audit, and that starts on page three. So this item talks about the bank reconciliation process and refers to the fact that the first six months were, the bank reconciliations were not done timely. I do wanna point out that this is a carryover item from the 2016 audit. As you were preparing the bank reconciliations early in 2017, unfortunately, it carried over to the year in order to be able to reconcile some of the 2017 reconciliations. So it did take the township a few months to catch up. Now, during the second portion of the year, the bank reconciliations were prepared timely, so I do wanna basically, you know, congratulate the township on catching up on all the bank reconciliations.
Hold on, I have a question.
Yes.
I'm confused. Furthermore, the reconciliations for the year were not signed off as reviewed until after the end, year-end, although management was able to provide other evidence that they had been reviewed during the year.
Correct.
That is an end-of-year item.
It is, however-
So that's a shortfall in our performance.
It is, however, it's not considered a significant material weakness as the fact that you weren't preparing the bank reconciliations. The reason for that is because they were prepared, and we were able to note that you were actually reviewing them. The one item that we would recommend the township do is implement a process to actually sign off and date when the review takes place, just in case a review takes, you know, somebody outside comes in and reviews it, make sure that you have the proof. So the fact that it wasn't signed off until after year-end doesn't mean that they weren't reviewed. It's just a matter of, the actual signature should take place at the time of the review as well as the dating.
So for the first five months of this year, Cindy and Plant Moran, are they signed off?
So, based on my understanding, the first few months, not until we audited. The rest of the year, the process is supposed to be implemented, so that way they're signed off and initialed every single month.
But, but I think you said in the first half of 16, and even before, reconciliations were not being done. Did you say that?
So in 2016, they were not prepared until 2017, and the reconciliation process, I believe, started somewhere around the time of February, maybe March. And it, I mean, in order to reconcile a full year's of bank reconciliations, it took quite some time. It was a huge undertaking last year.
Right. We paid them somewhere between $15,000 and $30,000 to do it.
In 16, they weren't being done.
Right. But we paid them in, for the audit of 16, they were paid to bring them up to date, to do the reconciliations.
So there was-
Plus, our employees did some work.
Right. Right, that's right. Is that right, Mark?
No, that's exactly right, is you can't, you can't do February until January is done, you can't do January till December is done. So we hired Plant Moran to come in about February of 2017 and do all of 2016, and we sat on the sidelines waiting until they were caught up, which was about the June timeframe, and then we came in and caught up.
Whose responsibility was that in 2016?
It depends on how you want to separate responsibilities. The way we're doing it today is that Amy, the deputy treasurer, is responsible for the bank reconciliations. Cindy then reviews and signs off, and then the clerk's office posts them to the general ledger.
Mark is just looking forward, not back.
I'd like to look back. The mess we had.
Okay, so is that all from you, Martin?
So that's the material weakness. I do want to point out, section two talks about-
So that's, you classify that, and I know accountant talks, so you classify that as a material weakness, but that's nothing that is not going to be corrected, that's not, that's not going to happen again, basically. And that's just still a lingering result of the 2016 situation.
Uh, wait a minute, no, in 2017, it was not a lingering result. What you're saying here is that we didn't sign off until the end of 2017 for 2017 documents, reconciliations. So that was when this current board was elected.
The signature itself, it would not be considered a material weakness, the reason we mentioned it in that comment-
I'm just talking about timing. The timing, it was on this board's watch. It isn't the other boogeyman from a long time ago.
No, but what happened was, it took six months to catch up, so we were automatically behind six months before we hit the ground running because we had to clean up 16.
Okay. So, what I'll do is I'll ask for somebody to show me at the next meeting, the signatures, or I'll have to come in and do it. We'll see if it's fixed for now, for this year. We'll go look at these signatures.
Yes, and based on the audit, so we did review all bank reconciliations during the year, and July through December, we're prepared and reviewed timely, so I do want to mention that. So the process was put in place once the audit for the 2016 was completed and once the bank reconciliations were completed.
So how far did you have to go back in 16? Did you have to go back to the beginning?
January 1st.
So all of 16 had to be rebuilt, basically?
Correct. And, you know, to be honest, so it did take a couple months, few months to get the bank reconciliations done, but it was 12 months' worth of bank reconciliation.
12 months' worth that were not, well, what's that?
It was not, it was not just the general fund, it was every fund.
Correct.
Everything.
Instead of 12-
Eighteen bank accounts.
It was a significant number of bank reconciliations.
Chuck, just to answer your question.
Well, thank you for cleaning that.
We are 100% on schedule with the bank reconciliations and signings. We've been, since June of last year, we've been, every single month, been doing the bank recs and doing the reconciliations.
Right, but you didn't sign off between June and December, I guess?
The official, the signature and the dating was not on there, but we were able to identify that the review did take place and that the-
We did the work, but we didn't sign it.
Correct. So there's just an item that we have a recommendation just for proof. We were able to identify other documents in order to be able to solidify the fact that they were reviewed, however, instead of doing that, you know, having that signature just would be much easier, that's all.
Okay, so that concludes your presentation, and does anybody else on the board have questions?
Yeah, I have a lot. Let's go. We're paying you. So page seven.
Yes, so I did want to point out a couple other things in the letter, just on page six, we have general recommendations, so they're not material weaknesses or anything like that, they're just general recommendations for the township to take a look at. One item is allocation of administrative fees. The township has done a calculation in the past, that calculation has, it's slightly dated, I do have to say that most municipalities don't do the calculation every single year, and it's the amount that general fund can charge other funds for services performed, so for example, Water and Sewer Fund. If, you know, billing's done, et cetera, by the personnel, then the general fund, you can bill for some of those items. So we would recommend updating that calculation. And then capitalization policy should be formalized. Right now, the township is using capitalization threshold of anything over $1,000 is recorded on your fixed asset listing. We would recommend having a formal policy in place in order to have that documented. On page seven are general legislative items. The main items that I did want to point out, there was one item that updated Uniform Charter of Accounts, that was a significant item that a lot of municipalities in the state of Michigan were concerned about, the time that needed in order to do that. The state did defer that requirement, and right now, it's, to be honest, it's unknown, it's sometime in 2019. So we're not really sure what that necessarily means, it could be in 2019, it could be even postponed later, but I did want to point that out because I know that was a big relief for a lot of folks around the state. And then the other item that I did want to point out is actually page eight, which we alluded to earlier, regarding the new other post-employment benefits. So the retiree healthcare obligations, right now, technically on your full accrual basis, are not recorded to the full extent of the full liability. It's only recorded the amount that you haven't been contributing above and beyond what you're required to, just fund as you're paying as you go. So in general, your total liability is about 16.3 million for the post-employment benefits. On the face of the statements and the full accrual, you have about 10 million or 11 million recorded, so your actual deficit for your full accrual will increase by about $5, $5.5 million next year, based on these numbers. Now, based on new exural dollars, that might change a little bit because that isn't only an estimate, but I do want to point out that the deficit will increase in your full accrual statement. Those are the main items that I wanted to cover in the letter.
Martin, on the capitalization policy, did you find anything that we did not capitalize over $1,000?
We did not have any issues with the actual threshold and the capitalization itself.
So the automatic rule we have in place, we just want to formalize that rule?
Just to formalize it, correct. And you may want to consider, you know, is that $1,000 correct, or did you want to, you know, make that adjustment, maybe $1,500, $2,000? There's a lot of different numbers that you could use. $1,000 seems pretty common, but I've seen municipalities use smaller, and I've seen municipalities use larger numbers as well.
What's the GAZBIE say?
There's no set requirement. You definitely don't want to go too high because you won't capitalize pretty much anything, but you want to make sure that you have a nice list of fixed assets that you have in place, but you also don't want it to be a burden on the accounting team.
Why does capitalization matter for government? It's just a balance sheet thing, isn't it?
It's just a balance sheet, I mean, it does, for your full accrual, it does show your overall total assets, and then you see the accumulated depreciation, so you kind of see the age of your assets as well. So if you see that your fixed assets are, for example, 80% depreciated, that means you're probably going to be spending some money pretty soon in order to refurbish them and acquire new assets. So it does matter overall.
Or if they're stolen, if they're not there or something.
Okay, any other questions?
Yes, like I said, I have a lot. Let's go back to seven. First dot point says, "So even if home sales do increase at a faster rate, the property tax revenue will be held to this lower amount." I'm having a hard time understanding that. When a house sells, it uncaps, so the tax rate goes up to essentially the taxable value and the market value. So why is that statement in there? Maybe I don't understand what I'm talking about.
So when houses don't sell, and most houses unfortunately don't, unfortunately and unfortunately, they don't change hands every single year, so if someone lives in a house for 50 years, that house is locked at the taxable value, and the taxable value can only go up by Consumer Price Index or 5%, whichever is smaller. So if someone's looking at their state equalized value or just overall market value in their houses or their home, and they're looking at it and saying, wow, these values are skyrocketing, therefore the township, the cities have to be really making a lot of money, that's not the case.
All right, I interpreted this as a sale of a house, that it, that I couldn't understand why, it wouldn't be at the lower amount if you sold the house. So I may have misinterpreted it, or it was poorly written, whatever, one or the other. All right, the next one is F-65. Online filing now required. Who will be doing this from Plymouth Township, by name? All right, good.
You know her?
So it's not the treasurer. And let's move up to, in, page nine. In order to receive CVTRS payments for fiscal 2018, we need to have a citizens guide, performance dashboard, debt service report, two-year budget projection. Are we doing this, and when do we have, who's doing it, and when do we have to have it done?
I do that every year and submit it by December. It's online on our website, and it's also on BSA's website.
The two-year budget projection also, so you just?
Yep.
Use a dartboard on that one?
Yep.
All right. Number 10, see, I had a question, but, all right, here, number 10, pension slash OPEB bonds. Now, this relates a little bit to our sporting millage request that's going to come up here later in the meeting. I'm trying to understand, this says that therefore communities meeting certain criteria, such as maintaining a credit rating of double A or higher, and closing or freezing plans can issue bonds up until December 31, 2018. Are we a double A rated?
Yeah, we're double A plus.
All right, so we qualify in all of these. Why can't we sell, can we sell bonds?
If you chose to.
In Plant Moran's mind? All right, I thought it was told we couldn't do it, only Oakland County. Okay, so more than Oakland County can do, can sell bonds for OPEB.
So municipalities can't do that, the issue with that is you'll, so what happens, you'll sell the bonds, it goes into, the proceeds go into a trust, so that way you can invest the money. The issue with that potentially is that your investments could actually decrease, and you're still stuck with the liability on the bonds. Now, communities do that, and, you know, it all depends on forecasts and depends on how the market does. So in some cases, you can definitely benefit because the interest rates are relatively low still on bonds. It just depends on financial performance of the-
Okay, so we'll talk more about that when we-
Why would you, you would do that so that you can basically borrow the money and invest the money?
And make more money than you're paying on the bonds.
Okay, right, the gap between the interest rate on the bonds and the return.
Some of the bonds, too, to stabilize their payment streams, if you have the bond payment versus whatever the money is being lost to each other.
So Oakland County was probably the most notable that did something like this about three or four years ago?
Also, the city of Detroit did something where they issued financial instruments that got them into bankruptcy.
Yeah, but they spent it on all kinds of other things, I think, right? I mean, but whatever, but, so there is provision. Let's go to page 12. The due date for completion of Form 5572 is January 31, 2018. And then it says, 5572, I don't, I'm confused, did, are we supposed to file it, are we, by June 30th, or, and?
So what happened was when this came out, I think it was November, December, that the state issued it, all of the June year ends from 2017 had filed, so they were given until January 31st of 2018 to do this. Anyone whose year ends came subsequent to that, you have six months past your fiscal year end to file.
Okay, so that's June 30th. Who's doing it in Plymouth Township?
I've put together the reports, Cindy's reviewing it right now, and we'll push the button within the next couple days.
Okay, so we're onto that one. That was a little confusing. Okay, so 12, down at the bottom, so we have a, yeah, that's just about underfunding, I understand that. Let's go to 13, which is a spreadsheet. Summary of unrecorded possible adjustments, it's all the same. Bond refunding, does this mean that we accounted for it in the wrong fund?
It's not the wrong fund. When you issued the refunding bonds, technically you can put on the balance sheet some of the premium deferred charges and amortize them over the life of the bonds versus just expensing them upfront. Since the cash was actually spent, the township expensed it, and this just shows that technically you could have put it on the balance sheet and amortize it over the life of the bonds.
Amortizing would be better from a cash flow standpoint?
It would have zero impact-
It's not cash, but I mean, make your, what would it make, it would make us look better in some way, right, on which document?
It has zero impact on cash, and I could have to say, most municipalities, depending on the dollar amounts, they expense it just from the perspective, they don't have to keep track of it every single year and amortize it.
So this is a suggestion versus-
It's a suggested entry that was not booked. This would be, you know, to make it 100% correct, but since the dollar amounts are so small, it does not skew the reader's perspective of the financial statements in any way.
If the number was a million, then you would be concerned that it should be amortized instead of expensed.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Any other questions from the board? Well, hold on, from the board? All right, let me, I just want to make a comment that I'm thrilled that we have been able, once again, to get this audit done on time, according to state law, the way it's supposed to be. And, you know, our goal here, one of our goals, is to try to be boring. And, and there's-
You're doing a good job.
There's never anything very exciting about audits, you know? And that's the way we like it, because we've had way too much excitement over the last two years, trying to clean up the mess that we inherited. So I want to thank Plant Moran for your continued service to us on this, and audit, and past the past audit. I especially want to thank Cindy Kushner and her staff, and Jerry Vorva, and Sandy, and everybody in the clerk's office who provides assistance for her. Cindy Kushner puts in a ridiculous amount of hours in this building, late at night, on weekends, to make sure that this audit is done on time. And I cannot thank you enough, Cindy, so, you know, for your, for your hard work on that. And it will get easier. It will get easier.
I also want to say, Amy and Mark, in the clerk's office, because they really stuck up in the, in the clerk's office.
Absolutely, thank you, and thanks for mentioning Amy and Mark as well, because it is a team effort. We don't have the staffs that many of our neighbors do, and especially in Canton and Northville Townships. We're a very lean operation, and so that means people have to share responsibilities and work collaboratively, and also work very long hours and put in a lot of time to make sure that things are done right. So, you know that light at the end of the tunnel, when you're, when you're here late at night or on the weekends trying to get things done? That light is not a train, it is, it is the sunrise, because we are, we get better every time, and we get better every day. So next year's audit should be even easier. I don't know if it's going to be fun, but it'll certainly be easier than this one. So we have really, we've really turned the corner, and, and we are, we're grateful for all of you for making this another boring audit. Any questions from the public?
One comment, if I could add to, is I know how much work it is on the township's part to provide all the documents. It is above and beyond what you do on a regular basis, and it's many people that were involved in the process. We do thank you very much for the opportunity of working with the township. And again, I know it wasn't easy, but it definitely appeared to be much easier than last year. The stress level, you could see at the township was much less than last year. So we appreciate the effort, and the improvements were definitely noted during our testing, just even on the bank reconciliations, we noted that, you know, the best improvement over the last few months, so definitely congratulations on that.
Is there a single audit as, due as well this year, like for the forfeiture fund?
So, a single audit is not due for 2017, you did not meet the thresholds, so from that perspective.
Is it still 750,000?
The threshold is still 750, however, we are still working actually on the previous audits, so that is still being worked on currently.
That's correct.
We did get a lot, we did receive a lot of the information over the last couple of months, and that is being worked on currently.
That is correct, we're still working on the 13, 14, and 15 single audit. And I'll just note that in 2016, we paid Plant Moran $110,000, and this year, we paid him $45,000. Total billings, 110 last year?
110, 355.
That's just for the audit or for everything?
That was for everything. The year before that was 138,000 in 2015. So we still have a bill running for the single audit, which is not done, the past single audit, so 13, 14, and 15. We still have some outstanding payments to make on that, and I'll have a total for you when that's done.
Thank you. Any comments from the public? Okay. All set? All right, so we need a motion or something here, don't we?
Mr. Supervisor?
Mr. Clerk?
I move to approve the Resolution 2018-06-26-40, accepting and approving the audit of fiscal year 2017, along with financial statements, all reports, the letters of required communications, and follow-up recommendations to be filed with the state of Michigan by Plant Moran.
Thank you, motion's been made by Clerk Vorva, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Treasurer Clinton. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Supervisor Heisey?
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Clerk Vorva?
Yes.
Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Trustee Dorsevitz?
Yes.
Trustee Hyman?
Yes.
Motion passed, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next up is item five, EMS transport requests for proposals. Okay, next up is Item 5, EMS transport request for proposals. Trustee Dempsey.
Thanks. We'll all remember that a couple of meetings ago, May 22nd, we had presentations from Chief Phillips on the Fire Department mid-year report and recommendations and then from the treasurer on public safety expense projections. And part of that included a potential for revenues having to do with transport. And we had talked about the situation. I thought maybe my voice was quaking, but hopefully not. So before we moved too far, I thought, and I think we discussed this, that issuing a request for proposals generally to have an open bid process to see what the provider, private provider industry might respond to and in terms of meeting the needs of transport, life support, et cetera. This would be a process that we could evaluate bids, hopefully from our current provider, maybe others, and make a proper evaluation of those before we move to some other arrangement. We don't have a contract or formal agreement today. And I understand that other communities do have formal agreements. So from that good government standpoint, I think this makes sense. But it also can provide other benefits. So trying to move this process along expeditiously. I prepared these documents. They have, provided them to you and I would like us to issue this, to approve this resolution and move forward with an RFP.
So who's going to accept the assignment to do this? To do the work of the RFP so that we have a timeline and we know who's going to do it?
In terms of preparing it, I've been working with the chief and the supervisor. So we would finalize it along with the clerk's office and I think the goal is to get this out certainly by August 1st, if not earlier.
The RFP does not have to be approved by this board?
Correct. No.
Kurt, have you received the?
What would be the process for evaluating? Are we just going to kind of just see what the market is and?
Well, that's a good question. My hope would be that we as a board would receive and review all of the responses. Sometimes we don't do that because perhaps the issue isn't, doesn't rise to the magnitude where we all have to look at that. But certainly in this case, I think we should all see all the responses.
In a work session or something like that? Where we can have a dialogue without having to be recognized and all kinds of stuff?
It doesn't stop us now.
I was just going to say that. I just blurted out. Thank you for doing this work.
We have looked at the, you know, we don't want to reinvent the wheel and I know the city of Novi recently did an RFP. I don't know if it was last year or a couple of years ago for Emergency Transport Services and, and there are some other good models out there as well.
Kurt, do you have the example contracts that HVA told me they sent you?
Yeah, I have them. I would have to find them or I could simply get them from HVA.
Because they'd be useful in the analysis?
Yep.
Or in preparing the RFP?
Yep. Yes, I agree. Okay, any questions or comments from the board? Any comments or questions from the public? No?
The township doesn't pay, the user pays who's transported to the hospital. No.
Just the opposite.
Be paid. Or some creative alternative where there's a real, real agreement. Right now, it's, for the last 30 years, it's been a gentleman's agreement. HVA goes on our runs and transports most of our people if they can't, Plymouth Township Fire Department transports.
I guarantee you, given our financial situation, I would not be proposing this if it was that we would pay a provider outside of township to do this. Correct.
They would make their revenue off transports and invoicing insurance companies. That's the way they do it now.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, I'm looking for a motion. Trustee Dempsey, would you like to do that?
Sure. I move to approve Resolution 2018-06-26-41. That the Board of Trustees requests the supervisor and clerk draft and issue a request for proposals for the provision of private emergency response and non-transport pre-hospital life support services. Furthermore, that the RFP be issued no later than August 1, 2018.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Trustee Dempsey. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Hyman. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Clerk Vorva, yes. Trustee Dorchevitz?
Yes.
Trustee Hyman?
Yes.
Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Next up is Item F6. That's the Manhole Project Rebid Award Approval and Public Services Director Felrath and Dan Brooks from Wade Trim.
Good evening, Mr. Supervisor and members of the board. On June 6, bids for the 2018 sanitary sewer manhole adjustment program were received. Total of five bids were received. Tonight, we have a recommendation. The lowest responsible bidder was identified as JB Contractors from Detroit, Michigan, with a total project bid of about $305,000. The project's scope is to raise 388 sanitary sewer manholes that are buried, adjust them to grade. A copy of the bid tab is enclosed for your reference. We also have for your reference the letter of recommendation from our engineer consultant, Wade Trim's, Wade Trim Associates. Mr. Dan Brooks is with me tonight to help answer any questions in regard to the contractor's qualifications and experience. This, this project does, for all intents and purposes, includes the scope of work that was originally under the 2017 manhole project that was not complete. In addition, this has additional manholes, roughly 175 to 200 additional manholes that were identified since the 2017 program that began in August. They were identified as part of our ongoing sanitary sewer cleaning and televising project under the SOL grant. The project completion date for this contract is September 28, 2018. And there will be, when, when we do second quarter budget amendments, there will be, if the project is awarded, to cover the additional expense for the additional scope of the project. If you have any questions, I'm here to help you.
I have a question, which is, the resolution or the motion talks about awarding a contract for 305,000, which does not include the Wade Trim 30,000? So how does that sort out?
Correct, correct, yes. The, the actual bid from JB Contractors is in the amount of 305,000. That is the proposed motion to award the contract. There is construction engineering, an additional $30,000 that would be included in the budget to cover the engineering associated with, with the contract.
Done by Wade Trim?
Yes.
And you're okay with them doing that?
I am, yes.
You're a little better than I am. I, I still question Wade Trim's ability to be a decent tier-one supplier for the township. I've, I've seen stuff in the last six months that I don't think they've acted in the best interest of the township or its citizens. Nothing against JB Contractors, but, you know, dealing with Wade Trim, I'm, I'm less than a name.
So let's talk about that a little bit. The last contract that we awarded, which was aborted, how many, how much, how many, see, to be able to compare and do the staff work is, what was the cost of that contract? What would have been? Or was it the same number of manholes, 388? Or it's different?
It's different. The original contract was 200 manholes.
200 manholes. And what was the cost on, per average manhole cover?
Well, the total contract was around $134,000. That's what we had budgeted for, so.
This is more than twice that now?
Yes. That's correct.
And so is the, the rate per manhole up significantly? Must be.
Yeah, if you look at the, so the bid tab is itemized and if you were to compare what we received last time with the low bidder, HDS contractor that did not work out, their unit price was, for adjustment for that line item was $300 each for an adjustment of a manhole, $300.
For the previous contractor?
Correct, the HDS.
Okay.
Construction group. This year, the adjustment, the unit price has gone up. It's $490 each, which is slightly, slightly higher than the unit price of the second low bidder from the previous bid, which happened to be the same bidder.
So do we go from 300 to 500 per hole for manhole?
Correct, but the 500 was just a tad higher than what the second lowest bidder was from the previous, from the previous bid. The.
So I see, I follow your logic is that.
The $300 wasn't really.
Maybe the other guy misbid it.
Correct.
And that's maybe why we had some trouble. But I still, I have some concerns and are we, we're paying duplicate engineering to Wade Trim again? If so, we need to get a refund from, somebody needs to negotiate a refund from Wade Trim or some offset because the program management on this was a debacle and we lost three months' timing, April, May, June. So if I'm not speaking correctly, then say so if I'm.
Well, the effort from 17 was working with the contractor who was in the field and he was, obviously wasn't performing. We spent a lot of time trying to get him to perform.
And then the winter came.
The winter came and he was, we were going to start it again in the spring, but over the winter, we canceled the contract. All right. And then we, we discussed the second low bidder, if they'd be willing to start this spring to work on it. And it felt, it's felt because of the number of manholes that changed, you should rebid it. So we rebid it and this is the situation we're at now. We get 388 manholes, slightly higher per manhole. That contractor that's, that's, we've sat down there and discussed this with him and he understands the.
I have a.
The critical deadline.
Sorry, I thought you were.
All right, September.
I have a couple of questions. Why the change in the number almost doubled?
Well, as we.
When, when I was told before that you had done some engineering work in order to determine where these manholes were at, did, where did the other 170-some manholes appear from?
Well, as they continued with the investigation, the numbers increased, okay? From the 200 to 300.
Aren't there, aren't there maps? Aren't there, don't we have, don't we know how many manhole covers that we have?
Well, as you know, under the SOL grant, we're, we're cleaning and televising all the sewers within the entire township. This has been an ongoing program. We're, we're near complete, but it's taken a year to do that. When we went out in August, we were about maybe halfway through that cleaning project. It's a lot more easy to identify these manholes when you're running a camera within the sewer where you see a manhole cover and if it's accessible or not. So yes, we, we thought we had a good handle in the beginning, but this is confirmation with the actual TV footage. Because we have, as you know, we have close to 4,000 sanitary sewer manholes throughout the township.
The, well, it begs the question then, we went out for bids before we knew how many manhole covers were identified, so we bid too soon?
Well, we're, we're trying to meet the SOL grant deadline. So we give our best estimate based on the information, what we had, in order to meet the grant deadline. The, the intention here was to get these manholes exposed, raise them to grade so we can inspect them, we can assess their condition, and include them under the SOL grant. We're going to have a tough time doing that at this point. We'll, we'll raise them to grade, we'll expose them, hopefully we'll expect them by the September deadline, but still getting that assessment and factoring that into our, our model under the SOL grant, it's, it's going to be a tough, tough.
So we may have unreimbursed expenses that won't go, that'll have to come out of the water and sewer fund?
No, I'm not worried about, we'll find other ways to, to expend if that comes, if that comes down to it, towards our, towards our asset management program. But I would like to.
I'm confused. It worries me because if we're going to pay for it out of water and sewer fund, let's not raise those, let's reduce the scope of the program.
Let me be clear, this, this money is not eligible under the SOL grant. This is to adjust the manhole. This is not part of the SOL grant. What's part of the SOL grant is when you inspect them and you assess them and you include the, the condition analysis and factor that into your, your asset management program, your CIP, doing the actual assessment. That's part of the SOL grant. But the actual construction contract, this is not part of the SOL grant.
Was the old one part of the SOL grant or not?
No, it was not.
So it was always out of pocket from the water and sewer fund?
Correct.
It's just going to be a lot more?
Correct.
So, so I understand this is important. We have to do this work. But wait a minute, Jerry, you don't have to because we've gone 40 or 50 years without doing it.
Well, you don't run and run to a Frasier situation.
Well, no, you have to use a metal detector and find it if you have to get in it.
Well, I think it's important just for that reason.
Try that in a snowstorm when you have basement flooding.
So, so. But, but when, in a, in a meeting we had earlier this year, when I, when I queried the difference in the cost to Wade Trim in relationship to how much the contractor had been paid, it was 10% of the work was done by the contractor and paid and Wade Trim had received 75% of their $30,000. And I was told that a lot of the, that cost was pre-engineering work. So some of this pre-engineering work should already be done and the cost to us should be less than $30,000.
Yeah, I agree with, my manhole has been marked three times. That means somebody went out there three times and put an orange mark in a period of a year.
Well, that, that marking was done by DPW, wasn't done by Wade Trim. All right.
It's still money. I don't know, why would we do it three times? It would wash off.
Because we need to do it as part of our stormwater permit mandate from the federal government, among other things. And also, we're always in the process of updating our GIS system, which is an integral part of our water and sewer system.
So do it once and record it. But anyway, it just seems odd to me.
Yeah, I'm still confused. I'm sorry. The first contract was for 200? Was that an estimate?
Based on the information we had at the time.
So that was an estimate?
That we knew that were buried.
So we missed that estimate by 100%. You realize that?
Well, that's the next question. How many were actually done?
Raised.
Raised.
Raised last time was 32, 32.
32?
And we paid him $11,000 to go away? That was what it was? Or he got paid 11,000 to go away plus the 32?
Okay.
Is that, I don't know.
All right, so just trying to get my handle on the numbers here. So they raised 32. We now have an additional 388 that we've discovered that we need to do? Is that what?
Well, not additional, it's 170 plus, about 200, 200 additional.
Okay, and that's based on further televised footage?
Investigation, televising, manhole inspections.
And what does Wade Trim actually do today? You did pre-engineering with the first contract?
No, the first contract, we prepared the plans and specifications, all right. We had a. We had a person assigned with the contractor to help him in the field. All right, he wasn't out there full-time.
To help them? What does that mean?
Help him with locating manholes.
Read the man.
And then we have to inspect his work to make sure it's done properly, you know, per spec. And he was estimated to be working anywhere from two to four hours a day, depending on the contractor, how he was working. All right. It was estimated that he would, he would raise about six to eight, six to eight manholes per day is what we were estimating in the last contract.
Six to eight?
Six to eight manholes per day.
So, he worked four days.
Well, no, he just, he was not, he was ill-equipped. He almost had to hold his hand, you know, in the field.
I think part of the rub here, Dan, is that I don't think, if I can step in the shoes of all the board members, I think there's a great concern that we're not paying Wade Trim to do the same thing over again.
No, no.
That's a big, that's a big rub for us.
It is very clear with this contractor, that we sat down with him and made sure he had the equipment to physically have a team in front of the manhole raising crew to verify the manhole is there, you know, recheck the information. And he'll have those things marked, so the manhole raising crew can go in there and raise the manholes. And then he can tell our inspector that he raised these 10 manholes today. We will look at them tomorrow to make sure they are proper, sign off on them, so he can get paid.
But Dan, did you give us the same letter before that basically take out JB contractors and put in the failed guy? And just said, "We met with the contractor, reviewed the scope, they're wonderful people and we really love them." You know, did you provide this kind of letter before for them as well?
For the original contract?
Yeah.
When we were going to use the original contract or to rebid it, right. We sat down with them and explained the project. They explained how they were going to approach the project. All right. We told them we weren't going to be out there locating the manholes for them, we're not out there holding their hands. All right. We're out there to inspect their work so they can get paid.
How much did we pay you for the last contract?
Pardon me?
How much did you receive from the township?
It's roughly $30,000.
Okay, so, we paid you $30,000, so we paid you $1,000 a manhole?
Well, if he was doing his job properly, he would have had more money.
I mean, it still equates to $1,000 a manhole. I don't consider that a very good deal.
Well, and he's blaming, in part, the former contractor, so...
Yeah, but, you know, and maybe, maybe our department has some of the blame also, for lack of supervision, but...
Colossus there.
But, I mean, $1,000 a manhole, and now you want another $30,000. It's just, that's unreasonable. I'm sorry, it's not a, it's not a good, not a good deal for the township.
Another issue is, if there are 388, and there are 13 weeks in July, August, and September, that's 30 a week.
Right.
Right? Can they do, can this contractor do 30 a week?
He indicated he can do 10 a day. All right. Looking at that, if he worked those 13 weeks, he really only needs to average six to seven a day. All right? If he worked every day for the three months.
You mean, seven days a week?
No, five days.
Five days a week.
Right. So, it could be, it's doable, and based on what he explained, how he does it. All right.
Did you, did you talk to the folks at Southfield and Wyandotte to find out whether they did...
They did manhole raising for them. Not in this large of a project.
Not in, not as large?
Not as large. There's more in storm sewer work than sanitary. But there's not a lot of contractors out there that does this type of work for buried manholes.
Patrick, is there another engineering firm that could do this work for us?
Yes, all, any one of our pre-qualified engineers.
That would be my, that would be my suggestion. If we're going to award this contract, I think we need a different engineering firm to manage this.
The only risk of that is, then we lose even more time.
I understand that. Then I want a discount.
Miss the window.
And there's, there's no record of good performance here.
I don't know if that can be solely blamed on the engineering firm, though. I mean, we were, we were on the verge of litigation with the former contractor who had dropped the ball repeatedly.
I understand, I understand that, but part of that dropping the ball is on us, too. I mean, we, we had poor supervision then from, from our services.
Yeah, the program management might have been, might have been troubled, but I don't know if we can...
But we, we had progress meetings with the contractor. It wasn't just we gave the contractor award and said, "Call us when you're done." We had progress meetings with him. He did not fill, fill his promises as he was working. He said he'd be out today, he'd be out tomorrow. We call him, he's not out there. He said, "I went out and, okay, I raised this manhole, I raised that manhole." We went and checked. He did not raise those manholes. You know, we, we had a number of conversations with him. That's why we finally, over the winter, said, you know, we really, to move, to make this go forward, we really need to terminate the contract and get a different contractor.
Well, I go back to what I said before. The rub is that we don't like the idea that we're paying you guys to do the same work over again.
Well, I don't know if you're paying us to do it over again. It's still, it's only time that we were, worked in the field, because we were requested by the contractor, because he was working, he said he was doing, he's doing his job. We go out there to check it. He's not doing it. We sit down, talk to him, you know, it's...
Still $1,000 a manhole.
But if he was doing his job right, he would have had the 200 manholes raised for $30,000. It would have been a lot cheaper.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board? Any comments or questions from the public? And I would ask that everybody who has comments or questions on any item come up to the microphone so we can see you on television and hear your voice.
I would suggest that we put a condition in the contract that if, you know, put some number, you know, there's got to be some proof of the pudding. Because as far as I'm concerned, he waited too long to report the problem, and, you know, essentially, we're the ones that ended up paying for it. So, can we put something into the contract that, say, within two weeks' time, X amount is reported, and he needs to be given a time limit on if there's non-performance from the contractor, it needs to be reported immediately? Not two days later, immediately? Okay? You know, anyhow, I'm just suggesting the condition be added.
But we have a staff member there who's managing the engineering firm. Patrick?
Right, right. Obviously, project management fell down somewhere. It's pretty obvious.
Comments or questions from the public? I need a motion on this item.
Okay, I'm going to do this reluctantly, because I want to get this job done, but we need to, you may need to have an offline discussion, whoever administers Wade Trim, and discuss it with their, whoever their officer is that handles our account. We need to micromanage this. Also, we probably should need to have a project timeline. Put it in the next board packet, or something like that. You guys do a project timeline, maybe? Put it in the board packet or hand it out ad hoc or whatever, so we can micromanage it. I move to approve resolution 2018-06-26-42, authorizing the award of the rebid contract for the 2018 sanitary manhole adjustment program to JB contractors in the amount of $305,605, and authorize the clerk and supervisor to execute the contract for same.
Okay, motion's been made by trustee Kermy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Dempsey. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Hyman.
No.
Trustee Dempsey.
Yes.
Trustee Dorshavitz.
No.
Trustee Kermy.
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton.
Yes.
Trustee Heisey.
Supervisor.
Supervisor Heisey.
Yes.
Clerk Borba?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, thank you.
Got to pass this time, but...
But we got a lot of work to do on this, guys. And I'm not, you know...
Just not make it wrong.
We have had meetings off-site with Wade Trim. You know where we stand.
We hear the message.
Okay.
Let's do something this time about it.
All right. All right, at this time, I'd like to take about a 10 or 15-minute break. This helps us with the recalibration of the TV, so that we can have an uninterrupted tape of this meeting. So, when the, when we go for break, what will happen to the cameras? Are they going to go off? The cameras will stay on.
Turn the lights off.
So, don't turn us off at home, but I do ask that everybody turn their microphones Okay, we are back on the record. So, hopefully, the cameras are rolling again. And next up is item F7, option agreement to purchase communications easement with New Par, doing business as Verizon Wireless and Charter Township of Plymouth. So, Bob, yeah, just back it up there. I am requesting your support of the attached option agreement with Verizon regarding the cellular tower located on township-owned property at the DPW yard. This option agreement would provide us with $400,000 for a perpetual easement to Verizon for continued access to the tower and the tower's backup generator and related structures. We already have an ongoing agreement with Verizon. That agreement is now, it's either expiring or they would like to update it and renew it. So, the tower already exists, the land is already under lease to Verizon for easement purposes, and this would provide us with a, would provide them with an option to, I believe, 120 days due diligence to then agree to the, agree to the, to the option agreement, and then provide us with $400,000 in exchange for the, for the perpetual easement. So, that would be a one, this would be a one-time deal. Then I would also recommend that we use the proceeds of the option agreement to finance a new fire engine, supplementing the $400,000, which has been earmarked for this specific purpose in the 2018-19 state budget, as outlined tonight by Representative Noble. So, I can answer any policy questions you have, and Kevin can take care of any legal issues that you may have.
How much do they pay now?
Mark, they...
Twenty grand a year.
Twenty grand a year.
Twenty grand a year.
So, what's the net present value of that? I mean, over 20 years, is that, where's the financial analysis? And how do we know that this is the right price? Remember, remember also, when I asked the question last year about, hey, are they paying? And we discovered they were in arrears by three years? That money all had to be diverted to the water and sewer fund. Mark, you and I spoke about that. So, how can we use this for a fire truck? And lastly, I don't recommend earmarking it for a fire truck. We need to leave management flexibility, because what if something happens? We, we don't get the, I mean, just leave, don't box yourself in. So, I asked a whole lot of questions, so...
Okay. Let me tackle the contract issue. So, this is a new contract with Verizon. I do not understand the past practice with respect to the proceeds of the lease. I believe that that was done in error, because the land on which this tower resides is owned by the Charter Township of Plymouth. It is not owned by the DPW, the Water Department, the Department of Public Works, or anything of the sort. We have had discussions in the past regarding the DPW building and how that building was financed, and that is a subject which has effectively been tabled for now, and I have no interest in revisiting that. But this isn't, this is a tower which we, we do not own. We did not build it with water money. It is not, it's not being financed with water money. And the fact that past practice was to put this in the water budget, I find as a curiosity. Maybe it was just done for convenience's sake or to, or what? I don't know. There's no, there's no written record or rationale for that. But my rationale is, because this is a new contract and is a contract for perpetual easement, and it constitutes a new, a new chapter in the, in the life of this tower, and that we can utilize the proceeds as we see fit.
So, you're saying, if in the future, we do something to the underutilized DPW yard to sell it, that this will have zero to do with this particular easement?
It's a good question. It depends, I guess I would have to tell you. I am, I've pretty much abandoned any interest in selling the DPW building itself, primarily because we still have an ongoing legal question on where those proceeds go. The building itself, we believe, was financed with water money, from the, from Water Department funds back in the 1990s.
Including the land?
I believe that the land was deeded to us by, by Damadia.
For free?
Yes. And I've talked with Gary Roberts about that, and I believe Jim Anowitz would, would also agree and concur. I've talked with Jim about it. And most importantly, title to the land is in the name of Plymouth, Charter Township of Plymouth. I mean, it's not in the name of a Water Department. The building issue, though, I am just going to, I'm, I'm moving away from that one, because that was a, that, that still has a cloud over it as to where the proceeds go, Gary, so I'm just not going there anymore. You know, we have to move on to other, other projects.
Well, let's, let's be smart about this as, you know, versus a political thing. The building's underutilized, and, you know, we could get quite a bit of money for it down, down the road.
Yeah.
So, let's, I just, I'm concerned about this piece being tied to that land and building.
There is, there is underutilized office space in the DPW building. We all know that. I think at some point, I would like to revisit the lease or possible sale of that building. We have already done maps on, on what part we could, parts of that building that we could part with. But, you know, even there, as of now, if we were to do that tonight, I would, I would recommend that that money go to the Water Department. Okay? Because I'm, I'm not, I'm done arguing over where that money is supposed to go for the building site. I mean, it's, again, it's just time to move on.
So, this question is whether we take a 20 grand a year or 400, 400 grand lump sum payment? But how do, was the 400,000, did they offer that? Do we have any, I don't know whether that's fair or not?
Well, it was originally 375, and I got them up to 400.
I mean, it was their offer was 375?
Yeah.
But what, how, do we have any basis for evaluating what the market value of that space is?
I tried to do some research in that, Bob. There, there isn't, there isn't much out there. The big, the big question, Mark, in my mind is, where is this technology going in the next 10, 15, 20 years?
Mm-hmm.
What I could gather from what I read was, people are moving away from these big cell towers, and they're moving towards smaller, more densely dispersed ones.
Right.
So, if somebody said to me, "Mark, do you want 400,000 today or 20,000 for the next 20 years? And by the way, we don't know where technology's going to be in the next 20 years?" I want to take the money and run. That's my personal assessment of the situation.
Yeah, so 5G will require more antennas, because the higher bandwidth, the, is shorter dis, travels the shorter distance.
I would note that, you know, the, the tower that is out on Powell and Napier Road used to be a microwave tower, and it's not now. So, technology changes, and I have to agree with, with Mark on this, that who knows where this technology is going, but it's not going the way of these large towers. And so, to take the opportunity to have cash in hand now makes more sense than, than trying to figure out what's going to be going on in the future, so I agree.
And I think even, I think Chief Phillips will tell you, too, that the tower, the water tower at Station 2, there were all sorts of communications equipment on there that they removed. Is that accurate?
Yes. Yes, that's all accurate. All of that equipment was abandoned, and the building was deeded over to the township.
You mean, the little shed, the pre, prefab shed?
That's, that's correct. It's a little shed with air conditioning and heat.
So... Well, let's get back, Mark. Why did you take that $60,000 and put it into the water fund? And now, we think we can put this into the fire truck?
Just because that's what they'd always done in the past. I looked at what they had done historically, and I did the same thing.
There was a reason for that.
I don't know what the reason was.
Well, but there was a reason if it was being, it was done before Edwards came about. Okay, so it wasn't like an invention. All right. So financially, this is just more of a technology reach, where is it going to be? And based on the offer. What about this earmark? You guys really want to earmark this money?
Well, I mean, with the, a fire engine, you're going, you're going to find out in the next few minutes that a new fire engine's about $635,000. So the state's grant is not going to cover it. I, I find this as a unique and, and innovative opportunity to find money to supplement what the, what the state is providing us. And if you want to go further, I'd like to, I'd like to actually see the rest of the money from this sale be used to finance an ambulance, which we also need.
And you can do, you can do all of that without earmarking it?
Yes.
That's my point.
We don't have to spend it.
Well, I mean, so we can amend the motion. I, I furthermore that the, or just leave it, sign it on behalf of the township. Boom.
I mean, I'm okay earmarking it because I, you know, but wait a minute.
What if something changed?
Wait a minute, that, that's assuming that the next motion passes.
Yeah, that's why you can't.
You can't do that.
Well, no, you could, you could earmark it.
No, I'm saying this earmark says, it's, what, what if the next motion doesn't pass?
Well, it could pa, it could pass six months from now.
Yeah, the state money will be available throughout, from October to October.
I'm just saying it's presumptuous.
Well, I mean, I, I think we all know where it's headed, but, I mean, I, I.
I would suggest, I'm, I'm not opposed to earmarking it, but we don't have, we don't have to spend the other 180,000. We could put it into, pay down some debt or something. We don't have to spend it.
Well, and I, and we're not, you know, the question was raised and I'm not going there tonight either. I, I just, I think that's a question that we have to wrestle for another day. I don't even know for sure what a new ambulance would cost. I think it's in the 225 range. Let me throw another curveball at you though, Bob, because from a, from a state perspective, I think that this would go a long way to show the state that we're serious about purchasing a new fire engine. They've given us 400 grand, but it's not going to cover the cost. This would be an indication to the state that we are, that we're, we're going to take care of the rest of it and we have found a way to, to find the money.
In other words, hurry up and give me the 400,000 we're going to spend it? Well, they can't do it before October 1.
True, but even after October 1, I mean, we're going to have a whole new crop of legislators and, and elected officials in Lansing starting in January, and I, I want to make sure that we nail this down. So on the earmark issue, what do you, I?
I don't want it in there.
You don't want it in there?
There's also, you, you have bargaining, we have, we're doing labor negotiations and things like that.
Yeah, but, yeah, well, let's, um. Okay, sign it behalf of the township.
I'd actually rather have it in there.
Yeah, I would too, so.
Well, is there any question that you would use this, these proceeds for anything else?
Who knows? Yeah, how do you know?
No question in my mind, but, but that's why I put it in, that's why I put it in the motion.
If the next agenda item passes, we're going to have to pay for the fire truck anyhow.
What you're, what you're planning, what you're saying is, you're planning to buy the fire truck before you get the money from the state? That's what you're trying to say, right?
The chief is going to outline our process for obtaining the fire truck in the next few minutes. We have an answer to that question.
You get a deal based on working with other municipalities, so.
No, it's a different issue.
That's why we need to have study sessions that, you know, I'm not, I'm not, I don't know what's going on.
Well, I'm all in favor of study sessions, but you, you know, a lot of, a lot of the other colleagues have said no, so.
Yeah, but when you're doing, they get, if we've got something going on with another community, we can talk about it.
Well, after tonight, you're going to find out our agendas are going to be a lot, a lot lighter, so.
Leave it in.
Any other comments or questions from the board?
Just to note that, that this is an option contract, which means that the person who's receiving the option can use it or not, or they can sell it. I mean, it's a, it's an assignable document, you know, you can, you can sell it, you can assign it. I'm just bringing that up. I know the lawyers on the board know. This is so they can drive vehicles back there. The tower is owned by Verizon already. Yeah, but what I'm saying is, any, any option contract can be assigned.
Let me throw another curveball at Bob there. That the proceeds of, how about if we, the proceeds of the agreement be considered to supplement the purchase of a new fire engine? Considered? That gives us a lot of wiggle room. I like that. Rather than saying that it shall be used.
I don't know why you have to do anything.
Okay.
Well, how about that, that the intent of the board is that? Go toward that.
Say it again?
It's the intent of the board.
Considered. Considered is pretty, pretty open-ended, right?
Right. I like intent better because that says, that's a.
Okay, well.
It's a, it's a soft direction.
I'm trying to be accommodating, so.
Okay, if something happens and we, for some reason, don't end up with a fire truck and it could potentially become part of our labor negotiations, "Hey, you guys said you were going to buy a fire truck and you didn't." And now we're, we're not, we're in danger or something, you're going to complicate a lot of stuff.
Equipment purchases, I've never seen equipment purchases as part of collective bargaining. It's management's right to buy or not buy.
That's why we want to maintain management's rights.
Well, then this would do it. My, my motion would do it, so. Okay, Kevin Bennett?
I just wanted to make a point of clarification. The option itself is not subject to assignment, but if the option is exercised, the easement may be assigned to an affiliate, which is broadly defined, of the grantee of the easement. Just a point of clarification.
Can I, would you like a worded?
If you would like to make that motion, sir, yes.
I move that the Township Board approve Resolution 2018-062643, authorizing the option agreement to purchase communications easement with New Par DBA Verizon Wireless and authorize the supervisor and clerk to sign on behalf of the township. Furthermore, that the intent of the board is that the proceeds of the agreement be used to supplement the purchase of a new fire engine for the township.
Thank you. I will support that. Any more comments or questions from the board? I also neglected the public. So ma'am, if you could just come up here to the microphone and, so we can hear you.
With cellphone towers and leases, there are companies and consultants out there that will do research and let you know if you are being paid a fair amount for your lease and will review the agreement. I think it should be something that is considered for this before making the vote. It could get us more money for this lease and find, you know, possible issues with the agreement.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else from the board? Okay, we have a motion that's been seconded, so Mr. Clerk, please take the role when you're ready.
Supervisor Heisey?
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Clerk Borba?
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz?
Yes.
Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Trustee Kermy?
No.
Motion passed.
Thank you very much. Next up is item F8, request to purchase a fire engine.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Chief Dan Phillips. This is Captain Chris Mack. Captain Chris Mack handles all of our vehicle maintenance for us, and he's up here to help me with any technical questions you may have. I left on your desks two pieces of paper, and I believe the clerk also gave you a revised staff request for board action. The revision is specifically this. The cost of the truck is 662,309. The purchase price of 635 assumes the township to enter in what's called a prepayment option. That reduces the cost by $27,000 to the truck by prepaying it. Myself and Treasurer Clinton started digging into the numbers on this prepayment option, and we found that while it does lower the cost of the price because the manufacturer will refund you the interest that they pay on the engine and purchasing equipment, the costs associated with the financing of the vehicle would eat away that entire amount. So we felt it was better to just show you the total cost of the vehicle that we would pay on arrival of the vehicle in 10.5 months from today. With that being said, when the grant money does come in, we can apply that money to the purchase and get a portion of the prepayment reduction based on when we pay that money to the manufacturer. If you have any questions on that or any other items, I am happy to answer them. I'm just going to jump right into questions. I mean, we've, we've talked about fire trucks for over a year now, so I, anybody who has questions, go ahead.
Where would the truck be parked?
Where would the truck be parked? Right now, it's the intent that this truck will eventually end up at Fire Station Number 2. With that being said, most likely, this truck is going to be located for the short-term future, probably the first two years, at Fire Station 3 at Becken Territorial.
Are we leasing this or buying it outright? And the, the, the delivery time is 10 and a half months?
The delivery time is 10 and a half months. At the, the, the staff request before you today is to purchase the vehicle and to pay for the vehicle when it arrives.
How much deposit do you have to put down?
Nothing. We put down a purchase order with the manufacturer and they start building it.
What engine is in it?
It is a Detroit Diesel DD-13.
So what's the cylinder configuration?
Six-cylinder.
Inline six? Do you have to use the blue fluid or is the fire truck exempt?
No, you do have to use the down fluid.
All right.
What he's referring to is a DEF diesel emissions fluid to help clean the diesel exhaust, so it comes out cleaner.
It's part of the catalyst system?
Correct.
So what are the risks here? If we commit to this, are we going to have enough money since we don't have a millage approved? We don't have the, what is it, the state grant in hand? But we have $400,000 from the sale of this. So the risk is low?
Well, that's.
How would you, how would you classify the risk?
That's why, that's why when Chief Phillips and I were talking about this yesterday, we have, we have the option of paying $635,000 today or wait until the, the, the
Delivery.
truck is delivered and pay roughly $662,000. So in my mind, we have three options. Number one, we can write them a check today for $635,000, which I don't want to do. And the reason I don't want to do this is I don't like somebody having my money when they haven't delivered something for 10 months. The other option is we borrow the money, but then we're paying an exorbitant amount of interest. By the time you pay the interest, you're up to the 662 anyway. So in my opinion, the best option would be order the truck, wait until we get the money in hand, whether that be from a grant or whether that be from the state or whether that be, or, or from the sale of the cell tower. And if we get that money in hand, boom, then at that time, we can, we can apply the payment. That's my recommendation, even though the price is a little higher, to me, that makes more sense and is less risk.
So here's a dumb question. There's no new fire truck dealer that we can go to and see what they have on their lot and buy it? You have to order a fire engine to be constructed in this day and age to get, to acquire a new one?
That is correct. There is one dealer that is attempting to do a, kind of like a car, that they just make the truck and you buy it, you get no options. It's a brand-new truck. It hasn't been out there long. We did look at that vehicle four months ago. We were not impressed with it. We are not impressed with the quality. We'd like to see how it fares on the road for several years before we look at it again. Again, the risk would be much higher in this truck because if this whole endeavor fails, well, we'll own a truck that, you know, we can't do much with.
What is the name of that manufacturer? I think they're in West Michigan.
They are, Spartan Manufacturing.
Spartan?
Yes.
Oh, they're in Lansing? Right? Spartan in Lansing?
They're in several locations.
Is it Spartan Motors?
They're in Holland, is where Spartan is.
Holly?
Holland.
Holland?
Yes.
All right.
So you have to custom order these trucks?
Yes.
They don't have a set package?
I don't know if you guys remember, but in, during 911, when the, the towers fell, the city of New York ordered pumper's from a company called Seagraves, and they lost a lot of fire trucks. And a lot of communities around the United States said, "Well, just take the truck you're building from us and send it to New York." The only thing standard on a Seagraves pumper in New York City was the Segrave emblem. That was the only thing standard. Everything else was custom-built for New York City. This is something long-standing in the United States. It goes back to the days of Benjamin Franklin. Every city has their own specific threads for their hydrants, and it, it was designed this way because whoever put the fire out got paid back in the 1800s. So fire departments would make their threads, their plugs, all of their equipment specific for their community and their area, so that they were the company that would get paid when the fire got out because they could hook to the hydro. And that unfortunately has carried on to today where every community has their own unique stuff. Now, with that being said, we use Detroit Standard Thread. This whole area uses our national standard thread. Detroit Standard Thread comes through our community, but we don't have any of those hydrants anymore. We do use national standard thread, so we are getting better.
That's where the term "fire company" comes from.
Yeah.
Yes.
This, this truck was specifically designed with this community in mind. We've been working on this spec off and on since 2012, constantly updating it, constantly moving it forward to where we feel this truck needs to be for us now and into the future. This truck, when we designed it with this spec, is the thought process that this vehicle is going to last, last Plymouth Township for the next 20 years. We've tried to make the compartment fit what we have and what we might have in the future. We've really put a lot of time and effort into specing out this truck, measuring different things, measuring the compartments, making them fit our needs in this community. You know, the, the needs of Northville Township may not necessarily mimic the needs that we need here in Plymouth Township. We have different equipment, different manufacturers for that different equipment, and quite frankly, they have different amount of manpower to handle that equipment. So a fire engine that might work in West Bloomfield, for example, may not meet our needs here. And we've thought, we've really thought about that and really tried to make this fire engine meet our needs here in this community.
Boy, this makes a cost accountant go nuts because it's totally custom. It flies in the total face of the concept of the auto industry where you standardize things. So if we, if we have cooperative relationships with other communities, you're going to have difficulty using your equipment?
Absolutely not.
In other words, we, let's say we combine again with somebody.
Like with the, like when we combined with the city of Plymouth, their fleet merged right in with our fleet. In this particular area, all of the, well, most of the connections are similar. There are communities near us who have different threads. Canton, Northville, the city of Plymouth, all use the same style of equipment.
Are you talking about fire department threads?
Yes.
Fire hydrant?
Fire hydrant threads, yes.
All right. Who has different than us in the area? LaBona is different?
LaBona, yeah.
What about the city of Detroit?
They have Detroit Standard Thread, which is different than national standard thread, which Plymouth Township and the other townships have.
Unbelievable.
I would agree with you, Bob.
So it's, I guess I, I would have liked, if you guys sat down with us, and maybe I missed the meeting, and we, we had like a work session and talk about this truck more because we're spending a lot of money, and it's a 25, it's going to be a 30-year decision in the end. So, you know, like what's on it and what you just told me today, I never was aware of what you just said.
Chief, what, what fire engine are we replacing with this?
We are replacing the 1989 Pierce Dash that is currently at Fire Station 2.
How much?
Actually, I take that back. That truck is currently at Becken Territorial.
How much do we spend on average keeping that fire engine? How much do we spend on average keeping that fire engine operational every year?
That truck, this year, we expect to spend about $20,000. That truck has, the, the steel tank in it has rotted away. Um, and right now, I could, if I wanted to, I could punch it with my fist and break through it, ruining it. We, uh, the manufacturer is constructing a new tank for it. That's going to be about $17,000 to replace just that. Right now, I have about $3,000 in outstanding bills. I called the repair facility today. And then, uh, at the present time, we've spent about a little over $1,000 on that particular truck.
How about parts? Are, are parts available for that truck?
The parts, we, in all of these bids, we require the manufacturer to make parts for 25 years. They are still making parts for that truck, some of them. Other parts we have to hand-make. Um, we have, we have another truck, a, that's in for service right now, um, engine three. We had to have them hand-make the new door handles. They don't make the parts for it anymore.
Is this, is the 1989 fire truck, is that OSHA compliant for our, our men in the, in the vehicle?
It is not OSHA compliant. As a matter of fact, we cannot sell that truck to another fire department. That truck is illegal to use, except for the, by the agency that originally purchased it. We're grandfathered in. The reason specifically is that is an open cab design where the firefighters would sit outside of the vehicle. That is no longer allowed under Michigan law or federal law.
Do you guys think we can use this as a recruiting tool?
Oh, absolutely. Um, yeah. No, uh, depart, firefighters like to go places where, which have good equipment.
I mean, as we're fighting for the same talent across many communities.
We, we are fighting for the same talent as every community. As a matter of fact, last Thursday, I sat outside of a chief's meeting and six of us talked, and we're all getting the exact same applicants, and we're all competing for the same, uh, new young firefighters.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
So what is the tank made out of in the new truck?
The original tank was made out of steel. The new tank is made out of poly-
Polyethylene.
Polyethylene with a lifetime warranty.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the public?
Thanks. Thank you. Susan Bondi. Um, I just want to comment that we have an 18-year-old fire engine, 25-year-old fire engine, and a 29-year-old fire engine. They have a life expectancy generally of 20 years. I think we can thank our current firefighters for the condition of our trucks, that we have been able to get this many years out of these trucks. And I think we've had them asking and begging for a new truck long enough. I think it's time we bought a new truck. It, we need it. Chuck, I'm aiming this at you. We need that truck.
I'm not arguing whether we need it. I'm arguing whether we're buying, we're doing it exactly right. That, I want to make sure you do things right. Just doing, this is not an impulse purchase.
No. And, and I believe, as, as Captain Mack said, um, essentially, they've been studying this since 2012. It's, it's not an overnight decision. Okay?
Okay.
My big problem is with hyper customization. It's building in long-term costs. There's got to be a better way.
I understand what you're saying, but that is the standard in the fire engine manufacturing is everybody, they, these are completely custom vehicles all across every manufacturer.
Okay.
This Spartan manufacturer is just now starting to get into a standard design.
I think they're on to something.
Well, that's possible, but at this point, it's unproven, and it doesn't necessarily meet the needs that we have. We need certain compartmentalization for that truck.
You mean, storage?
Storage, which they don't offer in that vehicle.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the board? Looking for a motion?
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Heitman?
I move to approve resolution 2018-06-24-44, authorizing the purchase of the Pierce Enforcer Pumper, bid number 598, from Halt Fire Inc., to be purchased through the Rochester Hills Cooperative, RFP, for $662,309, with the understanding that early prepayment could result in a discounted price to be determined at a later time.
The motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
So let's talk about the budget.
Second, hold on. Second by Trustee Dempsey. Is there any further comments?
Yes. How are we, which budget are we going to put this in and what adjustments do we have to make? Nothing for this year? Let's talk about it, so we all know what we're doing. Anything for 2017? Any budget amendments or, or do we have to encumber it for 2018? Do we need to encumber anything? Not if you're going to take the money, the $400,000 you get from the state to, to make some prepayment.
Okay. We just need to, we need to do budget planning. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton? Yes. Trustee Heisey?
Yes, I'm Supervisor.
I keep wanting to call you, I keep wanting to call you trustee all day. Okay, Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Clerk Vorba? Yes. Trustee Dorchevitz?
Actually, technically, we're all trustees, yes.
Technically, yeah. Um, good. Trustee Kirmy?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, guys. Next up is item F, uh, nine, approval of valid resolution for public safety millage. Mr. Clinton, you want to start us off?
Sure. Maybe there's a lot of detail there, so I'll let Bob catch up a little bit. I'm, I'm seeking, uh, your support in putting a, um, a new millage on the ballot in November of this year in the amount of 1.2 mills for 18 years. So for the years 2018 through 2035 inclusive. Um, this is not a recommendation that I take lightly, but I've studied this thing 45 different ways. Um, and I believe strongly that for the, for the continued safety and continued solvency of the township, this is something we absolutely have to do, and we absolutely have to do it now. About four weeks ago, I gave a presentation, and I believe I opened some eyes, which showed that just covering the costs of our unfunded liabilities, our OPEB and I pension, um, we will be out of money in five years. Um, that's the impact of those legacy costs. And then when you start compounding that with investing in our public safety with new equipment, with continued salary increases for our personnel, um, that money, that, that timeframe becomes significantly less. Um, so I think it's important that I, I explain the urgency of this, something that we have to do. I think it's important that I explain the amount of how I came up with the 1.2. And then in the resolution itself, the, the language has to be very particular by state regulations in terms of what goes on the ballot. And Kevin Bennett has studied that and come up with, I believe, is what the correct language has to be for the ballot. So we're approving the need to do it, the need to do it now, the amount and the, the language that will appear on the November ballot. Bob, would you mind scrolling through just a, I'm not going to go through every single one of these slides.
Is this the corrected version after the error from the last presentation?
It is. So-
Hold, hold on. The error that was made by the former clerk when she mistakenly, um, transposed or inserted the wrong number in the annual report to Wayne County for our annual millage.
What?
The clerk, the clerk has to file a report with, with the Wayne County Treasurer every year stating what the, what the millage rates are and their duration.
That's September 30th of every year.
And that form was not-
I don't think the clerk does that.
My understanding that, that, that form was not correctly filed.
Doesn't the supervisor do that?
Let's, let's have, my question's for Mark.
Yeah, no, the, the form that was submitted, the L4029 form that was submitted over the last couple of years to Wayne County incorrectly showed a 2025 expiration for those two line items that are now 2035. So when I gave this presentation about a month ago, I was talking about a strategy to make the millage coterminous with the 2025 expiration of those. Upon further investigation, that expiration date was wrong. Those millages don't expire until 2035. My strategy still remains the same. Um, my recommendation is to add a new millage and make it coterminous with those final two and have it expire in the year 2035.
But, so your original intent, though, was to have them expire in 2025?
Because I thought the, those other two expired in 2025.
So that's adding 10 more years?
It's adding 10 more years and lowering the amount that would be required.
What, what was it before that would have been required?
It would have been in the neighborhood of, of when I did the pencil, probably about Here's the current state of the millages that we have today. We have four millages that appear on, on people's tax bill. The first one is for all general townships. Uh, it has no expiration date. That originally was 1 mill and now Headley rollback has dropped that down to about 8.159. There's another fire millage, originally for 1 mill, that expires in the year 2020. This recommendation assumes, the finances assume, that that millage will be renewed when it comes, when it expires in 2020. Otherwise, the financials don't work. The other two millages expire in 2035, and my recommendation would be to add a, a fifth millage to this in the amount of 1.2 mills.
And so, Mark, why aren't we, this is a strategic decision that is one of the largest tax increases we've ever proposed. Why aren't we doing this in a more deliberate sense? We talked about it a month ago, and then it's been dormant, and now we have to hurry up and get this on the ballot by, is it July 30th? Is that right, Jerry?
Yeah, 31st.
31st. Um, so it, I think this-
Chuck, I would make the argument that this, we've been talking about this since 2016.
I know, but the de, the details of it, we haven't talked about. And another thing you haven't thought about is if you use this word and language in any Act 312, you are absolutely committed, the union will look at that and say, that's what we have. We have negotiations coming. We have also the, uh, OPEB for retirees. We need to use this as leverage to get some concessions for retired benefits, uh, to get some buy-in from employees. My judgment is, first of all, the four, the four million, not the four mills, excuse me, this is 1.2. The tax administration fee is equivalent to about .4. So 1.2 plus .4 is 1.6. That's a 40% increase in our local millage rate. And you also think in the back of your mind, Mark, that this might not be enough? Maybe we ought to look at earmarking this for, because we're mixing it here. You're saying this is for police operations, but your presentation is on OPEB a lot and pension legacy. Maybe you need to break it up and make earmark a certain number of mills for those legacy costs, and then the rest for operational, and that would get you away from the Act 312 risk of saying, here's a pot of money that I want for my labor negotiations, and also to use as leverage to get employees to buy into backing off a little bit on some of the retiree health benefits, uh, that we're asking the people of Plymouth Township, who most of them don't have retiree health benefits and who are private sector producers, to transfer wealth for benefits that are richer, much richer than they get. So I really think we need to talk about this more, uh, so that we don't rush to do something, which I think if we do it tonight, is not wise. We're leaving a lot of options on the table and a lot of details.
Can we continue with the slideshow?
But the other item is, well, the other item is the bond proposal. Maybe we ought to bond, put a millage out for bonds. You know, that kind of thing. There's a lot to talk about.
So he raises a good point that him and I have seen, uh, before over the years, and that is when that pot of money is there, there, there is no, uh, negotiation in the history of the world where, you know, that collective bargaining unit ever came in and said, you know what, you don't need to levy as much. Because when that pot of money is there, that's right.
Well, I guess my counterargument to that would be if we had been doing our jobs as a township in the past, the money would be there. We should have been sending aside money for the pensions.
No, I'm saying what-
Wait. We should have been sending aside money for the pensions. We should have been sending aside money for the unpunted OPEB. We should have been sending aside money for, uh, to, to, to refresh our, uh, safety equipment. We didn't do it. That's why the state, that's why we're in the state we're in today. And I haven't been saying it in the last month. I've been saying it since I started campaigning in 2016. We're, we're kicking the can down the road. You can go back and look at my campaign presentations. I was studying it back then.
I look at, I look at them every night.
Sure you do.
Well-
But the thing is, so, is this millage, would it, would it be specifically, I, I, I forget. I read it, but I can't remember.
It doesn't say legacy. It says police services and fire services.
That's the problem.
Well, help me understand why that's the problem.
Well, you've never gone through an Act 312.
Yeah, it becomes-
Got to talk to the labor attorney.
You got this bucket of money here. I'm going to grab it and use it for some other reason, I being-
How are those different than the other millages for police, fire?
No, they aren't. They're not different.
It's not.
That's why you have an opportunity with something new. If you have a legacy cost problem, let's earmark it for legacy.
And if you're in arbitration, you can also tell Mr. Arbitrator that, um, I've got X amount that I have to spend on OPEB, X amount that I have to spend on pension, which benefits the union. Um, and I have X amount that I have to spend on new equipment. So, I mean, that all goes into the, to the 312, uh, pot as well.
Yeah, but we tried that before. We've tried that over the years.
Well, and you went to 312 and you got, you know, you got some concessions. There was-
Got huge concessions the last time.
Okay, great. So, but that was last time. And, you know, I don't know, walking into contract negotiations for another four years, um, you know, are we going to have, are we going to have the upper hand? Uh, it's going to be very difficult to predict that at this time, so. So, Mark, do you have more in your presentation documents?
I could, I just wanted to do, just point out a couple of slides. Bob, you can keep going down. Keep going. Yeah, I'm not going to go through all these. These are things that we went through the last four weeks. Go to the one that says total impact. I'm sorry, just back up again to that, that one with the, there you go.
Sorry, right here?
Up one more with the guy kicking the can down the road, just to, just to reinforce the point. Forget about all the Act 3, you know, the, the 312 stuff and the, the, uh, salary increases and the equipment. The legacy costs alone will burn through that general fund balance in five years.
You mean the, okay, this is where it's a little deceiving to people. You're talking about the, when you look at the graph here, uh, that they presented by Plant Moran, this sum of about $4 million? Is that what you're talking about?
No.
You're talking about any fund balance, assuming we're replenishing it. I don't get-
I'm talking about, there's, there's two actuarial firms. MERS sends us a bill once a year.
Right.
And they send us that bill every single year, and if we just pay that bill, that's what I'm talking about. The other one is the healthcare retirees. We have to pay a bill, a pay-as-you-go on an annual basis to cover the cost of our retiree healthcare. Those two things alone will bankrupt the township in five years.
On an operating basis?
But, Mark, how do you guarantee that this, this 1.2 mills will be used to fund these legacy costs?
How do we-
It doesn't say that.
How do you make, how do you make a guarantee? Because it's not in the language, uh, it, or it, is, is the intent of this millage to take this money, I should say, is the, uh, restriction of this millage to take this money and use it to fund, uh, pension liabilities? Because what can happen is now the collective bargaining unit comes after it for salaries and other things, because we have this money. We can afford it now. We have this money.
These two guys are giving us the wisdom of the past when things have been-
And when you're in, and when you're in 312, you're also going to have Mark Clinton at the table saying, here's the stuff that we've got to pay for right now, or we're going to, or we're going to go, we're going to smash. No, that, that, that goes into the 312 mix as much as the, as much as your assumptions, David.
This turns into salaries.
There'll be nobody left, no money left over for OPEB. You watch, if, in over the years. Also, what happens if you develop-
Because we've got so much now, right?
What happens if you're so successful with market, uh, economic development and somebody builds a huge op, huge operation out there on, and uses up all the land, the city Detroit land- and somebody builds a huge op, huge operation out there on, and uses up all the land, the city Detroit land, our land, the land bank land, something really big, you're gonna have a huge pot of money, then it could get all earmarked for fire and police.
Can this millage be written, can this language be written in a way that is, it's so restrictive that it can only be used for that purpose?
What the General Property Tax Act requires on the ballot language is a clear statement of the purpose for the millage.
Clear statement of the purpose for the millage. So it must be used to fund, you know, to fund, uh-
That's, that's the question I asked at that May 22nd meeting. And I was told that that very question would be researched, and we'd get an answer. And there, I haven't seen any answer until you asked that question and got that answer. So.
Can you, can you, can you go through to the resolution that has the exact language?
What, what, is it up?
Go down.
Down.
No, I'm sorry. Nevermind. It, uh, up.
The other, the other.
The other down. Okay, uh, that-
Where's the language again?
Down. It's right there.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Starting with shall.
Yeah, I know. I read it. I just couldn't remember.
So it says, "With the funds thereby derived to be used for police, dispatch, fire, and other public safety services and equipment for the charter township of Plymouth."
Yeah, there you go. Services and equipment, that means salaries. That means hiring, hiring firefighters and paying bigger salaries.
So I would, thinking off the fly, we could say something to the effect that the funds will be used first and foremost to fund the OPEB and healthcare retirement costs.
Exclusively, or?
You can't do this on the fly. This is a huge decision.
We are delaying, we're just, you just want to delay, so. Can we, can we, can we put something, can we?
We're, we're being told, we're telling the public, nobody wants to delay. We're telling the public, we're asking the public for 1.2 mills to fund this unfunded liability, and we want to be squishy with the language. So a future board, you win the lottery tomorrow, and the next board could spend this on hiring 100 firefighters.
No, I'm, 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 I'm working with you, so don't worry.
But you're saying we're trying to delay. That's not true.
Police, dispatch, fire, how about Kevin? Long-term contractual obligations?
I'll tell you, we were just told again tonight that we don't have to act on this tonight. We have until sometime in July.
Really? It's gun to head, I think, for July 31. You gotta do it quick.
Well, then we could have a special meeting, but just to do this on the fly is not seem appropriate to me.
Agreed.
I don't know why we are, what, what, what are we doing on the fly?
We had one presentation on May 22nd, and now we had another 10 or 15 minute discussion at 9:45.
And this just came out of the blue and came out of nowhere.
Yeah, officially it did.
The detailed language.
I recall the clerk saying, we all know we're gonna have to go for a millage, and I recall saying, I don't know that. Don't speak for me. And I said at the last meeting, there's a huge education process that I think you'd have to do for the, the residents of the township. Plus, you have the fact that you have a whole bunch of millage requests on this November's ballot. Have you factored that in? Do you think everybody's gonna vote yes on all of those, or they're gonna parse through them and vote yes on, on this and no on school craft? I mean, there's a lot to think about, and I'm leery of just proceeding now at 9:45 and working up some new language. I'd like to see us consider this more detail.
Deliberation, debate.
Delay.
No, it's not a delay. It's called doing it right so that you have the maximum impact and leverage for the long term. And we've never done an 18-year millage, and that's really unusual. It's a long-
And again, I'm, I, I absolutely totally support what you said, Mark. We need, we need to pay the piper. But I also think that if we're gonna go out and ask the public for money and say, we need it because we have to pay for unfunded liabilities that previous boards did not pay for, this language doesn't say that. It says we can spend on other things.
I concur with that. The challenge we're going to have is if we have a millage exclusively for, for the, for the OPEB and the pension, we'll run into problems very quickly with the other operating costs, cause we still have to fund those new vehicles, and we still have to pay our firefighters and our police, and there isn't money available today to do that. So I can-
Break it in half. But I really think what, but the concern is, is having voters vote for something that says pension and OPEB liabilities for people who have retired, they're gonna be reluctant to do that versus current operations.
Yeah, but it's truthful.
I know. I agree, but you know how government is. They're always trying to-
Not me.
I know, but it can-
Well, again, these are contractual obligations that we have to provide to the, to the men and women who have served our community, and we have an obligation to honor our commitments, our legally binding commitments to them. Otherwise, I, I don't know who would want to come to work for us. If we're not gonna, if we're gonna break our promises.
Wait a minute.
And, you know.
It, we are not bound to pay retiree healthcare for most people.
You don't want to pay retiree healthcare anymore?
We can, we're trying to lower it. We can discuss it with them and negotiate it. That's, believe me, the whole state's going to be doing this starting now, because it, a community like Plymouth can't afford it. You can imagine what other communities are not going to be able to afford. So we need to have the discussion. It is a, excuse me? Oh, I thought you had something to say, Dan. So it's, this is a real strategic walk, and we're taking it way too lightly. And I don't think the people of Plymouth Township are going to take it lightly when they go to the voter's booth, voting booth. And you'll suffer a defeat if you don't do it right. Of course, you can always bring it back. You know, and there are, there are undertones. We know that the Northville Township model of fire protection and staffing and transport is desired by some of the people in the bargaining unit and the leadership. So you need to be careful with a pot of money, cause you may end up having it in a New York minute. We're going out for a contract with HVA, or HVA or community or whoever they are. There's a lot of moving parts.
Okay, well, we also know that we have some very serious numbers staring us in the face that we have to confront. I don't know. I think, I think what I'm hearing is, I hope, good heavens, I hope there's at least consensus that we, we have serious financial obligations that we have to address within the next few years.
But we're not going bankrupt at this moment.
Then the can gets kicked down the road.
A few, a few weeks-
Cause we're not dying today, but you know.
A few weeks, or to get the language right, or to get agreement from labor unions or employees, or talking with them, getting some consensus, memorandum of understanding, we go out for millage to do this and this, and you as employees-
Nobody's gonna agree to that. Nobody's gonna agree to that.
Yeah, I-
No, no, I'm just talking about for, so we don't do something unilateral like some places did, like Wayne, where they just cut out the benefits and then it ended up with a big bruhah.
So my request then would be for people who have ideas to share them with Kevin Bennett. I mean, I'm, cause really what we're talking about here is, is ballot language.
No, this is strategy. Strategy and planning.
And, and, and you know that we're up against the clock, and you, and you're suggesting things that are unrealistic and will not, will not be attainable within the timeframe that is before us.
I think you need to parse it out, because I think what I heard here tonight, I think I heard two things. I think I heard, I saw Mark's presentation twice. Totally get it. Thank you very much for that work. It's very insightful. We want to fund this unfunded liability. But I also heard, oh yes, but we also want money for other things, right? But your presentation, Mark, was only on, you only talked about-
No, if you can go back to my slides.
He talked about salary increases in there.
Go back, go back to my slideshow. And go all the way down to where it shows total impact.
This is really a ticking time bomb, and we have to, we have to address it.
Move up, move up.
I don't, I don't, I don't mind if we, if we go to the next meeting or the meeting after that, but we really need to act on this in some fashion and come to some sort of consensus of how the language is going to be. We're going to need the money. How we do the ballot language, okay, let's work on that. But you're never gonna stop negotiations. We're under 312. You've got a police union, and you get a fire union, you get a dispatch union, you've got a, a township clerks, employees union, and you're, you're going to have contract negotiations with these people on an ongoing basis. You're always going to have that. You're always going to be faced with that. Now, it just so happens, I think that we do have a good group of people here who can be very good at negotiating, and we're hiring in a, a new labor attorney, and I think we're going to be able to, to bring forward all of this power on our side to articulate this, and then ask for reasonableness on the other side. And there's detrimental reliance. I mean, the people who-
What was the word?
But detrimental reliance. The people who, the attorneys don't know what this is. The people who were, and I'll explain it, the people who have retired detrimentally relied on our promises of the past. So they didn't do other things. They didn't do some other funding for, for insurance. They do some other funding for retirement. So they detrimentally relied on that promise, and so you do have an obligation to those people. Can you try to do some negotiating? Yeah, but you can't take it all from them.
We're not saying that.
But Jerry, if I may, with all due respect, I mean-
The private sector, they did take it.
Chuck and I collectively have 34 years on this board or something like that, and we've been, we've seen this. I've seen it personally. So what happens is that, because, because the, the union will never say, oh, here's this pot of money. We agree with you. Take this big, take this chunk out and set it aside and fund it. They never will. I guarantee you.
Well, they're going to have to recognize-
They will look at that, and they will say, you should use that.
They're going to have to recognize that it pays for their brothers and sisters who have, who have gone before them in order for them to have the money, and, and someday they're going to be there. And they're not gonna want to be short cheated neither later on. I, I'm a former union president. I'm a former city commissioner, state rep. I've been down and negotiating.
Not on our side of the table, you haven't been.
Bob, Bob, yes, I have. I was a city commissioner. Yes, I was. I was a city commissioner in Plymouth and did negotiations.
Bob, I'm a labor attorney. I have a law degree in labor, and I have, I have to go, I've done 312s.
With all due respect, you have not, you have not sat in this seat. With all due respect, we've seen it.
And I appreciate that.
Right?
Well, wait a minute.
Have you, have you ever passed the new millage?
I, I have, I have done 312s, and I will tell you, if you are in 312, if you cannot come to agreement, all of this pension, OPEB stuff is all on the table, and, and it works to our benefit. You're thinking that you walk into 312 and, and the union's gonna get, you know, 5% pay increases for the next four years.
Well, 312 is not based on ability to pay unless they change the law.
It, it is based on a variety of factors, including long-term obligations such as pension and OPEB. And frankly, the new changes in the state law strengthen our hand. There've been many changes. There've been a lot of changes to 312 over the last couple of years.
If this board goes out to the public and says, we need this pass this millage because we have unfunded liability, and, and it doesn't say that in that language, and that money is spent for something else, every member of this board is, has lied to the public then. If three years down the line, four years down the line-
I don't, I don't have any problem working through the, the language modifications. No problem at all.
I'm not getting the pushback from you. I'm getting the pushback.
No, this is, this is, hey, this is the discussion and debate. This is the discussion and debate everybody wanted. Let me point out this slide, cause Jerry, that one right there. I love it. That very first column is the year 2018. Now, I tried to, to simplify this as much as possible for Jack. I'm just kidding, Jack. Four components. Pension, healthcare, pay-as-you-go healthcare, right, for retirees. I'm not talking about funding anything in a trust. I'm talking about the lowest possible payment you can make on an annual basis for healthcare retirees. So pension, healthcare retiree benefits, I assumed a 2% salary increase for, for all of the current firefighters and police. No increase in staffing or anything like that, and the replacement of our current public safety vehicles over the next, next number of years. So four simple things. Salary increases, capital improvement project, healthcare retiree costs and pensions. That first column in 2018 is what we're paying for those things today. As they escalate, you can see all those things are gonna cost us more going out to the year 2035. You add all that number up, and we're gonna need $37.5 million more than what we have been paying today in order to fund those four things.
That's a cum number, cumulative, 37.1.
It's a cumulative, 37. You can see how it grows pretty quickly, right? I mean, that's why in the year 2022, you're paying $2 million per year more than you're paying today. That's why by the year 2023, you're out of money.
And we will have added, since this board took office, a million dollars of payroll at the same time, simultaneously.
Yep.
Million dollars of payroll went back in by the end of this year.
Okay, so, yep.
And that doesn't include really any OPEB costs for those people, or, or, well, there is no pension for the new people, so.
We can dismantle the fire- We can dismantle the fire department again.
No, we're not saying that. We're saying be deliberate, be smart. Maybe we need to do some more creative thinking. I don't know, but it's not just do it. We're not buying something here that is, you know, it's not a bottle of champagne that, you know, you, you drop it on the floor, so what? But we're doing a long-term-
Okay, then, my recommendation is that you get some language to Mr. Bennett so that we can work on a, a appropriate ballot language. And I also have, would ask Kevin, I'm not sure how much detail is even allowed. I mean, does the law, does the, there, there's a word limit, I think, and then there's also a, you know, I, I don't know how specific or non-specific the law allows you to get.
Well, what is-
Could we get a written legal opinion on that?
Talk to the MTA. There's gotta be a bunch of people doing the same thing right now. And why is it that, should we be talking about bonding for OPEB? Will that leave it, make it easier for us?
Why, why would it make it easier?
I don't know. That's what-
Pay it one way or the other. I don't understand.
You're either paying, you're either paying off the bond or you're paying MERS.
Paying direct.
It's the same amount of money.
So you're saying we don't need to consider bonding?
I would not consider it, no.
And it doesn't address your equipment needs either.
No, no, no. If we separated, to separate OPEB and pension, bonding. I'm, I'm trying to percolate up ideas to come to an optimum solution, not JFDI, okay?
Not what?
Nike.
So on this chart, this bar chart here, Mark? What, just roughly, how much of the, like a, pick a bar would be related to legacy costs? Do you think it's like half the bar, three quarters of the bar?
You have to go back up.
It's in here? Okay, I, I can look it up.
No, right, you got it. It's right there. It's that one right there. Those are your legacy costs. So, right, today we're paying about 1.6 million in legacy costs. That's pension and healthcare combined. That goes up to 2.8 million by the year 2025.
Yeah, that wasn't really my question, but we can save it for later. Okay, it's, it's 10 o'clock.
All right, any other discussion?
Any other discussion?
When can we get this, when can we review this again, if everybody?
Well, we have, next week is effectively a, a week-long holiday around here, unless you want to meet on Monday. want to meet on Monday. But our next meeting is July 10th.
Can you guys have something to, Kevin, Chuck and Bob? Certainly, we don't want to, we don't want to do the sins of the past.
Well, when is Kevin going to have the legal opinion?
What kind of a legal opinion are you looking for?
The same one I asked for on May 22nd, which he said he was going to do and he, and can we craft this language for these specific purposes? I think the answer is yes.
In other words, break it up, is what he's saying. Earmark it for specific purposes, right?
Essentially, yes.
Within the ballot language.
You might have two ballot languages, one for X mills for something and one for Y mills for something.
No, you, you, that's, no. If you bifurcate this, you are, you're, you're creating a poison pill that.
Yeah, but you could say it in the language. I want 1.2 mills of, 0.9 would be earmarked for legacy cost, 0.3 for other. Can you do that in one?
I don't know if you can.
I don't know.
Yeah, that's a legal opinion.
I, I rather, whether, rather than earmarking specific millage amounts, you know, I'm, I'm more open to just being far more specific in the ballot language as to where it would be going. And that's fine because that's, that educates the voters and it also provides us with legislative intent when you're, if you're in 312.
I know, but then you get in, you're talking.
Not, not to mention these graphs are terrific exhibits in a 312.
Yeah, but if you can earmark it and you say the first dollar goes to OPEB, then it's indisputable. It's earmarked.
Yeah, the, the challenge, I understand what you're saying. The challenge is that, that mix changes over time. In the first year, a big portion is going towards pension. In year five, a big portion is going towards capital. In the later years, a big portion is going towards healthcare. It, the, the, the mix of the money that I'm requesting changes over the 18 years.
And then eventually goes to zero for like pension after 2028, right?
Pension will go to zero. The healthcare costs won't go away until the very last retiree dies.
Right. Well, not only the last retiree, the last retiree's dependents.
So, Mr. Bennett.
So, okay.
When?
I'll have it for you by the end of this week.
Can we have this as the first substantive agenda item on July 12?
Well, they're all substantive.
The first, well, beyond the preliminary minutes, et cetera.
I'd be happy to. All right, so I'm going to move that we table item F9.
Postpone. Because I think table means we'll bring it up at the end of the meeting.
Okay. So I move that we postpone item F9 till a later date. Is there support?
Second.
Supported by, made by Heisey, seconded by Heitman. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Good, next up, settlement agreement with the city of Plymouth. We've already added the backup here tonight. Kevin Bennett will hand this over to you.
I circulated an email to each member of the board with respect to the final version of the settlement agreement. The form and substance of the settlement agreement is acceptable to both attorneys for the township and the city. However, there are still some issues specifically with respect to the extension to the tolling agreement. Attorney Marzano has indicated that the earliest the Plymouth City Commission could approve this agreement would be July 2nd. The extension to the tolling agreement expires June 30th. If the township does not file suit before or on the expiration date of the extension to the tolling agreement, the township would likely forfeit its claim to all pension benefits from November of 16 to present. I do not believe the township should take that chance. I believe the township should file suit. I will amend the complaint to include the theory of liability that I set forth in the email. I don't want to get into details in public. That way, if the city does what we anticipate, expect and hope that they will do and approve the settlement agreement on the 2nd, the payment date that the city has stated they will pay the amount stated in the settlement agreement is September 4th. If we file suit on the 29th, which would be Friday, then the summons would expire, I believe, on September 27th. So if we file suit but do not serve the lawsuit until we see if this, first of all, if the township, pardon me, if the city approves the settlement agreement, number one, and number two, pays the settlement agreement on or before September 4th, then at that point, I'd make a motion to amend the complaint to include violation of the actual settlement agreement as opposed to the email exchanges by the attorneys and then serve the city with that complaint. Time will be tight because September 4th is not that far away from September 27th, but it will give me some time to do what I need to do. So I would ask that the board authorize me to file suit under the conditions set forth in the email that I circulated.
Okay, Kevin. Uh, let's see. Any, any comments or questions and then I have a proposal.
I'm, I'm nervous about this. This is very complex. The city has us in a box.
And they already played the statute of limitation card on us once.
And they're going to, it'll get played again if we file suit. They couldn't, they, what they could do is decide not to pay, then they could litigate to us and this could be reduced to zero or $400,000.
We have no choice.
I know we have no choice, but what we're dealing with is, I thought we were dealing with our friends. They boxed us in. And I hope they're genuine. I hope they're genuine. I hope we can make it through.
Why don't, why don't we try to focus on the positive here?
Well, you have to focus on the risk.
What we're trying to do is preserve our, our rights under the tolling agreement. And, you know, they can't, we, we can't force them to meet, you know, on our terms.
Not what I'm saying. It's just.
Come on, we'd have a special meeting.
Well, you would, but.
You know we would.
So, okay.
This is a risk, but we have no choice.
Yep, okay. I move that the township board authorize the township attorney to initiate litigation against the city of Plymouth to protect the township's interests under the tolling agreement, which expires on June 30th, 2018. Furthermore, that the litigation of, that the litigation be terminated following the formal approval of the June 26th settlement agreement by the city of Plymouth. A little clunky at the end, but.
I would submit that because if we terminate the litigation before we file suit, because this would be the second dismissal, it would be a dismissal with prejudice. So I would submit that the motion should be that I be authorized to terminate the lawsuit after the city has paid the 1.1 million dollars and the township is certain that that amount has been paid.
So paid means that the check actually clears?
Yes. Absolutely.
All right, so I move that the township board authorize the township attorney to initiate litigation against the city of Plymouth to protect the township's interests under the tolling agreement, which expires on June 30th, 2018. Furthermore, that the attorney be authorized to. Or leave it, leave it alone?
When is the, is the township going to meet, the board going to meet in September?
Our board?
Yes.
We'll meet whenever we have to, to make it happen.
We, 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 we're going to meet in September. It's posted. We, we know what our schedule is.
Then you can leave it open ended for now.
Okay. So I propose resolution 2018-06-26-45 that the township board authorize the township attorney to initiate litigation against the city of Plymouth to protect the township's interests under the tolling agreement, which expires on June 30th, 2018. Is that good enough?
Can, can we use the resolution, which was for the, for the millage for this? Can we transfer?
I prefer to use 46.
46.
Okay, so 46. I amend it.
Support.
Okay, so motion's been made and seconded and Mr. Clerk, just call a roll when you're ready.
Trustee Heitman.
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton.
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey.
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey.
Yes.
Clerk Forber, yes. Trustee Kermy.
Yes.
Trustee Dorshavitz.
Yes.
Motion pass.
Okay. That takes us to supervisor and trustee comments. And all I would say is that we are going to, our next meeting, regularly scheduled meeting, will be July 10th. Between now and then, we do have the Fourth of July Parade, which will be in the city of Plymouth and we're all invited to march with our colleagues who will probably not be presenting us a check on that day, but we are certainly invited to march with them under a banner of Plymouth community officials. Following the parade, there will be an ice cream social at Kellogg Park at no cost or time expended by township employees. That's all I've got and we'll go around the horn, Bob.
Can we get on, we, we have an email system that is 20 years old. And, you know, can we get on Office 365? It isn't that expensive. And I can't, you know, my email, you know, I miss half my emails because it, it's such a clunky, crummy system. Please.
We're working on it. We're working on it. I mean, we're just finally buying new computers, you know, for many departments that have been operating with, you know, gerbils on, on roller skates right now for a while, so. We're getting, we're, we're aware. Is that it? Bob? You all set? Okay. Gary?
I had fun tonight, so.
I did too. Okay. Jerry?
Thank you very much. I do want to make a couple of, mention a couple of things. One, again, want to thank the treasurer for his thoughtful presentation for, for the millage. I do appreciate all the effort and time you put on it. Again, thank everybody in my department and the treasurer's department again for the good work on the, the audit and all the accounting processes. And I do want to point out that in, we're getting ready for the elections here and I want to tell you that my deputy Sandy and her assistant Joan helped some citizens out here by placing them in the proper precinct. We discovered that there were about 30 or 40 people who were in the wrong precinct. They were given this information by past clerks. It goes back a number of elections. Some people who were really in precinct two were given precinct one cards and told to vote in precinct one. Now, they got the vote, but what happened was an individual who was so designated wanted to run for office. And so he'd have to put down the precinct that he, that he lived in.
Oh, man, you don't want that to happen.
And so, so our, our deputy clerk and our assistant worked with the county and state and got that officially changed and the person was able to apply for a position and put down the proper precinct number that they lived in, thereby not violating any law. And so I want to commend them for their work and, and that's all.
And Sandy is here tonight taking notes because Alice's husband did pass away earlier today, so we are, their families and our thoughts and prayers. Mark?
Tax bills have been printed and will, will be hitting the post office on Thursday. Citizens should probably be receiving them Saturday, probably Monday at the latest. And I've had a nice little break, but tax season begins between now and, and the, and the February.
I'd like to commend the citizens who have stayed till 1016 and all those others who are here. Impressed with your fortitude. Thank you very much.
Chuck?
This question concerns probably the attorney and Kurt. This email I got from the citizen about the signs, can we just maybe back off on sign picking up or whatever we're doing during the election time and avoid some of these questions?
The citizen concern is, was sent to all of us today. It involves the size of a sign on, on private property and Kevin is researching that issue. But with, with respect to other signs and the easements, it is our, it's our policy to remove them all because we cannot discriminate based on content.
What about removing none? Like garage, garage sale signs?
Because I don't want us to start looking like Redford and Inkster in Westland where you have crappy commercial signs on every street corner. I think that makes us look like garbage.
So not that we have anything against Redford, Inkster or whatever. All right, so this is being researched, so there is maybe an issue. We don't know yet.
The, the issue that was brought up in Reed versus Gilbert is that municipalities may not discriminate or draw distinguishing enforcement procedures for signs that are content-based. That means that if the regulation or if the sign, you have to read the sign to enforce the regulation, then it is content-based. It is a little broader than that, however. The Reed case also set forth that if the purpose of the regulation is content-based and not just the regulation itself, then it is a violation of the First Amendment. So we do need to look into that a little bit more.
You know, the background is, there was a political sign that was picked up for size or complained about size. And then he's pointing out that, hey, you have a for sale sign for township property that is also in violation of the size. So why didn't you pick up that one? Or why didn't you, why did we do that? That's what the issue is.
Okay, that helps with, with respect to the context of the issue.
And there's zoning issues involved there too, so. Okay. All set? Public comments and questions? Yes, sir.
Very quickly, you're all tired. I'm Dale Berry. I'm president emeritus of Huron Valley Ambulance. And I'm here to introduce Ron Slagel. Ron is taking over as president and CEO. I'm in the process of retiring. We're overlapping for a year, so I'm here full-time until the end of the year and then I'll probably stick around and do some special projects. But I just wanted to introduce Ron to you and I'm sure he'll be talking with you as time goes on. We want to say that we're glad you developed the RFP process. We've, we've asked township leaders for that for years. It, it's, it's a best practice for communities. We have agreements with just about every municipality we serve and it just sets the rules so everybody knows what the rules are and what's expected of them. And there's, if we don't perform, there's opportunities for you to fix that. So thank you for doing that and we look forward to participating. I did note that, just real quickly, the township asked us to start serving them in 1991. And we went back today and discovered that since 1991, that was, Maury Breen was the supervisor back then, we've transported 29,786 residents or visitors in Plymouth Township since we started, 29,786. And we're not perfect. Sometimes we have issues, but I think if you look at the balance of it, we were trusted by the community. So we look, we look forward to being a part of the process and thank you for dealing with it tonight. Ron, did you have anything?
No, I just look forward to stepping in Dale's shoes. There are big shoes to fill, so I look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Can we, can we get your business card before the end of the night? Yeah, thank you. Next.
I just have one request in the spirit of transparency and information. I would like to request that the township have the PRC documents posted to the township website relating to their business plan, any studies, including cost estimates, design plans and scope of work for construction of all the projects that would be covered by the millage. Is that something that would be considered?
No, because I'm afraid that that would be a violation of campaign finance law. It would be considered. would be considered that we are advocating on behalf of, of the ballot proposal. So I would refer you to probably the PRC website, or unless they create an independent ballot committee to, to promote the, the initiative.
So there's no way that the citizens can get this information from the township?
It's not what I said. I said that if we were to put that information on our website, it could be construed as an endorsement by the township.
So there's a link on the township's website to the PRC now?
Yeah, there is, because it's, they are, they're providing services in the community right now. I mean, that, it is not to inform vote, it's not to inform the public about the, the millage or what would be going into the PARA project. I mean, it is a, it is a website right now. It's my understanding, I haven't been there in a while, but it's my understanding it just takes you to the, to the PRC website.
Kurt, are we going to have to remove that link during the election?
I would say no unless they're advocate, I, I don't know if Park has a separate website for advocating for the, for the millage or not.
Well, it's not advocating, but it's providing information so citizens can make an informed decision.
Well, then, we can keep the PRC website up, but I, I'm not sure if we, if we provide information, I, I think we would have to be very cautious about how we do that so that we're not accused of, of advocating. It's a very, it's a very difficult process for local governments to use taxpayer resources to inform the, the pendulum when it, when informing can become advocacy very quickly, especially in the eyes of people who may be opponents to the particular initiative.
So it will be fairly difficult or just not easy for the average citizen to get this information?
Well, once again, you're mischaracterizing my remarks, but it, I believe that there will be a very spirited election between now and November where the public will have all of the information they need, both pro and con. I understand the opposition is already recruiting volunteers, so, you know, I'm sure that both sides will get their points out.
So how, how do I get this information?
Well, Mr. Sonnen could probably point you in the right direction, or maybe there will be a committee. I do not know if there's going to be a committee formed to advocate on behalf of the millage or, or against. Nobody's been registered yet that I know of.
Because it, there is serious concerns with the, the cost estimates of the project and it being very underestimated.
Okay.
Why don't you go and meet with him, and he'll show you the construction estimates? Because you Googled, how much does it cost to build a theater, and then you came up here and said, I Googled it, and I found that his estimates are wrong. Why don't you go meet with him? He'll show you everything.
I am willing to meet with him, yes. If it's, if that's the only way to get the information, but...
Just go meet with him.
Not all 28,000 Plymouth Township residents can go to him and get this information. We need this information more readily available, and it's only fair that we be provided it.
He'll give it to you. You can put it on your website.
I'm not saying just for me. I'm saying for everybody. Everybody is going to be paying...
And then you can put it on your website. Your friends can put it on their Facebook page. He'll give it to you, right, Don?
Bob?
I'm, I'm not arguing about him giving it to me or not. I'm saying this is information that should be available to all Plymouth Township.
We need to respect, we need to respect people that come in here and, and have a different point of view than maybe others.
Oh, I think we've been very respectful, but we're also over, we're also over time here on this one.
But, but he keeps getting the answer to the question. He keeps answering the same question. Just go meet with the guy.
So, okay, sorry.
But in transparency of this...
We're way over time.
...proposal that it will, this information will not be available to all citizens unless they go personally meet with Don.
No, it's, it's another mischaracterization. So, well, your time is up. Sorry. Good night. Don?
Yeah, I won't need three minutes, Don, soon. Yeah, the information's obviously available. It's in my office. We've met with all kinds of groups. We will be putting out more information. Anybody who wants to know line item, I'll line them on the cost structure on this. It is available. A lot of that information is on our website, but we're talking about hundreds and hundreds of pages of information. It does take some interpretation and consolidation. Newman Smith is the architectural firm, as well as TMP, and we've got good cost estimates. Shaw Construction's been working with them on that.
Did you say Shaw Construction?
Shaw Construction is a contractor. They're on our Board of Directors, and they're very experienced in these kinds of things. So we've got some pretty good cost estimates. Of course, there's always some assumptions along the way. We also have, you know, the Plan Bs on some things to make sure that we end up in some cost situations, that we have, have things that we can do to control that. We've built facilities. We've got very experienced architectural firms that have done very detailed cost studies. That information is available to anybody who wants it. And as PARA gets established and gets up and operating, they will be very, very much involved. The township appoints four directors. The city appoints three directors. Those folks will be very much engaged in all of these decisions, cost evaluations, and the like. So I think there will be very, very good oversight, but the citizens of the community are very welcome to come in at any time. We will be having a series of forums going forward, too, so everyone will have an opportunity to see what's going on there. So, any other questions?
Don? Well, I'm just, all right. Yeah, I forgot.
Yeah, it's late.
You know, on our website, we've got the executive summaries of all the various studies that have been done. But you've seen, I think everyone on the board has seen all the studies that were done by SRR, by the Anderson Economic Group. It's not just our information. Very professional outside firms have weighed in on these things, the market studies, the business plan, and all of that information's available to anyone in the community.
Don, how can the PARA have the language in two weeks for the November election? How's that going to get done?
It'll be done. Already have the first draft.
Because the people aren't appointed yet.
What's that? We're already, as we have done with the other documents, with the articles, the bylaws, and things like that. There's already been work done on, on, working on millage language, of course. It's going to have to be approved and, and proposed by the, by the board. Hopefully that, those appointments will be made soon, but we already got a good start on that.
The plan is to have those names before the board, the recommendations, on July 10th.
Yeah, I mean, that needs to get done. We need to do the filing by the end of July, and, you know, we've got some work to do, but it can be done.
At least in about two weeks after being appointed.
Well, when's the, when's the city commission going to make their appointments?
They are on the, let's see, two days later, I believe, right around the same time. Two, two days, either Monday or Tuesday. It's, well, obviously on a Monday. I think it is probably the 14th.
What's the date for our meeting?
I know they're working on making their appointments as well.
Our meeting would be on the 10th.
So theirs would be on the 9th?
No.
A week later.
Week later.
Sixteen.
That'd be the Monday after, the Monday after.
Yeah, Monday after, six days later. Maybe they'll approve the agreement with us, then.
Yep. Okay.
Okay.
All right. Anybody else? We're all set? Okay. I need a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Supervisor, I move we adjourn.
Motion's made by Trustee Heitman. Is there a second?
I seconded at 10:30 PM.
By, uh, Trustee Dempsey with editorial comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys.